Welcome, I'd like to call this the regular meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees to order. We'll begin with the roll call and then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Here.
Flintoff's here.
Brizel.
Here.
Carrie.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Riser.
Here.
All here, also present is our Township Manager Joyce Parker.
No. Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Joyce Parker and also our Township Attorney Mariah Fink.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Considering that we're just fans, one nation under God, universal liberty and justice.
Next is adoption of the agenda. I understand that we have an additional item from Clerk Flintoff, that is the 300 Jackson Plaza Ann Arbor Indoor Golf Liquor License Request. And Trustee Riser, I understand you had some changes you wanted to propose to the agenda?
I wanted to move up if there's unanimity. The the last item with respect to the architecture contract for the Fire Department to consent agenda, and I wanted to move up the discussion about the KFC to before, right after K1. So before K2, 3, 4, and 5, because we have, are there people here for the Knights of Columbus?
No.
Um, I'll leave it where it is. I thought I wanted to accommodate whether
Well, there may be people watching remotely who are
Christie, are they on Zoom?
I don't know who is Knights of Columbus. I mean, they're welcome.
If they're gonna be coming via Zoom, I wanna move it up to K2.
Why don't we just go ahead and do that?
Well.
I know there are people, I know there are residents, not the applicant, but residents who are interested in that.
Okay.
Oh, so that would move K6 to up in new business so that it would follow K1. And K7, which is the possible action on the proposed fire station contract with partners in architecture, would move to the consent agenda.
One comment on that. First of all, to clarify, the add-on item would be a new G4 Costco Action 300 Jackson Plaza Ann Arbor Indoor Golf Liquor License Request. On the K7 Fire Station Contract, we've gotten some input and so have a brief discussion on the motion there. So I ask that it stay off the consent agenda wherever it be placed.
Or could we still move that up?
K7.
Well, we could, if you, if we wanna keep it as an item where we would discuss it and not just act on it together with all of the consent agenda, then it would move up to follow, along with K6, to follow K1. So it would be
K3?
K1, no, we don't change the numbers, that's too confusing, but K1, K6, K7, and then we would proceed with the rest of the new business.
That would be fine.
Is that acceptable, Trustee Riser?
Yeah.
So we go 1, 6, 7, 2, 3, 4, 5. Also have a suggestion, there's two meaty items that were included as attachments under regular reports. The first is the Code Enforcement Officer Discussion, and I think it warrants a board discussion with the possibility of some action to allow our manager to move forward in that, so I would propose making Code Enforcement Officer Discussion as a new item as K8.
Township Manager Parker, what is your view on moving your report somewhere else and turning it into an action item?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Alright, so that would make it
K8.
K8. But again, I would, I would, I would move it ahead of K2, 3, 4, and 5. So it would, it would, it would follow K7.
That's fine. My, my last proposed amendment is regarding the substantive report Z Road 6 and MEDC Grant Discussion currently appearing as an attachment under regular reports. It appears as though the supervisor is proposing the board reallocate money, so I would propose that as a new K9.
Actually, I would oppose that. I think it's fine where it is as a report. It's not an action item. I'm not asking for action this evening, I'm just reporting. And there can be ample time for discussion during the reports, which is where we often do have discussion. And if there is some future action to take, this would lay, that discussion would lay the groundwork for that at a subsequent meeting.
So no, 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 the board has not authorized any change in the grant agreement or budget with MEDC.
And I'm not seeking that this evening. And in fact, I would think we would wanna have more information before we would take that step. I'm simply making a report, sharing, sharing an observation of my own with the board and
Okay, cuz the next time we'd be able to take action is August 15th.
Right.
Okay.
There's, but there's, there's nothing that needs to change with it, that's, that's the point.
That's what I wanted to verify.
Yeah.
And no funds have been moved.
Oh, no, no, no. No, or, or, or authorized beyond what we've already authorized.
Sure, like no
But we can talk about this more when we get to it, but really, there's no need for action this evening. And so if, if, if that's okay, are we, are we, do we have any other changes to the agenda?
Remove KBK from consent, please. Our favorite topic. No, I, there's things that need to be discussed.
Alright, so that would be item G2.
Down to the bottom of new business?
Well, I think actually this is unfinished business, so that, I would, I would put it after J1 unfinished. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Alright, now the test will be can we keep track of all the changes that we just made? Alright, is anyone ready to move the agenda as amended? Alright, move by Riser. Support by Carrie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we've adopted our agenda. Communications to the Board of Trustees.
They're enclosed, I did not include the recent ones cuz our packet was so big that most of the board saw them, we had some communications regarding Uplands.
That brings us to approval of the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, skipping a step here. That brings us to public comments. This is time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Brizel, will you serve as our timekeeper, please? Please, those who would like to speak during public comments in our present, please come up and have a seat and take your turn, and then once we've exhausted all of the public speaking in the, of those who are present, we'll turn to those who are participating remotely. Who's up first?
About 5:55 Wood Grove and had the privilege of speaking in this group before on a couple occasions. I see some new faces, so I get my spiel of confidence. So it was about Arbor's Grove, which President Park Grove and President of Sciop for 24 years. And you've heard before, those of you who come here, all the many reasons, and there are many. This is wrong for Sciop, we believe, it's a high-density project in a small envelope, building envelope, a lot of trees, a lot of water, a lot of park row visible posed to this. And we, we know, we believe it's wrong for the town. Now, it's been great to live in this town for 24 years and see a lot of the development, it's been reasonable. You know, we've got protected farmland, we've got protected green space. We have small signs for retail, all of which does suggest some thought on the part of this body. And, and I know that there have been other examples of that. This is something that I got involved with when I saw the building plan. I thought, okay, I'm not a NIMBY person, I figure those are woods, something's gonna happen. You know, to think you're gonna cram 30-plus units into that small space, some of the, some of the garages parking end-to-end or cars, it's testimony to how they've crammed it in there, it's a minstrosity. It'll change kind of what's here. Now, certainly, Z Road is a commercial district, certainly north of Park and carrying over to, I guess about here. That's true. But I think some thought has been given out of the part of this town, and I appreciate that. I appreciate living here, it's a good environment, and I think we all do, we're your friends and neighbors. You know, I remember some time ago, and I don't have the backstory here, but some time ago, they wanted to build a Costco. Remember that? Some of you people were here, I don't know. I lived in the town then, over by Baxter's, I think the Baxter guy was down plus, he told me to always buy some booze over there. How unhappy was I didn't reveal that I was opposed to the project, but it was a bit of a minstrosity, really. So what'd you get, a Holiday Inn instead, something that's fairly discreet, something reasonable. So in this building envelope, we're asking that you don't allow a Costco, we're asking for a Holiday Inn. We're not, we're not saying don't build. I'm not a NIMBY person, I believe in development, but it's also, I think should be done thoughtfully as, as you've done in the past. So we're your friends and neighbors, and we're asking for your help. Thank you.
Evening, I'm Bill Doe, 465 Wood Crowe Drive. Tonight, I'd like to make a plea to you to listen to the citizens when they have issues and concerns. It takes a lot for some people to speak up about their concerns, it's just people don't like public speaking. I heard the Heritage Woods neighbors complain about the lack of response from the developer and some issues that they needed help with. That night, the final tie-breaking vote was a yes because the trustee that broke the tie said that, look at all the new tax revenue we have, which was quite interesting to hear. Should decisions be based on compromise and the good of the neighborhoods and not just tax revenue? Aubrey Grove's developer was encouraged by the city, Sciop's city planner to go max on density. This looks like a pro-developer and tax revenue agenda within the township and a total disregard for the character of the neighborhoods and the carbon-neutral goal of the township. Please listen to what the citizens are saying on these development issues. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Hi, everyone. I'm not a resident of Sciop Township, I'm here on behalf of Congressman Dingle's office. My name is Georgia, I'm her field representative for this area and the western part of Washtenaw County, which is the newest part of the district taken on during the redistricting period, so we've had it since January and I've been on the team since February. I just wanted to introduce myself to those who I haven't met yet. I've seen a couple of you at community meetings and whatnot, but wanted to let you know that our office is here as a resource to you if you've ever got any issues with the federal nexus to it, or otherwise, if you just wanted to keep us apprised of local issues that you think are important and just want to make us aware of. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I was here. Happy to leave some cards behind too, so you have a direct way to reach me. And otherwise, if you think there's something that we should be involved in as an office or the congressman herself, then please let us know. Be happy to do that, so, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm, you gonna come up?
Alright, good evening, everyone. I made some copies of this report from the bits here. We're in numbers groups, and I get some analysis. After we went through Senator Power's presentation last week about how different Townships handle electronic payments, I went through all of the Townships in Washtenaw County, filed payment processor, different payment methods they offer, what they create, they operate in-person payment for like current funds withdrawal at the office or just online, whether they offer online payments at all, who the payment processor is, as well as the fee that the payment processor charges the end resident or taxpayer for the tax. There's a couple interesting things when you go through that analysis. One of the things that jumps out right away, point-to-pay seems to be almost unanimous across Townships in Washtenaw County, where one of the few Townships that doesn't use them for whichever reason, it's fine, just it's kind of perplexing to see when you actually go out and look, we're in the minority on that. There's actually only two Townships that have a ACH form process, Augusta, and weirdly enough, Ann Arbor Charter Township, and they also do not allow you to pay online at all, which is just very odd. There are a lot smaller Townships on there by population who don't offer online payment, potentially because they don't have the resources internally to work with BSN to set it up or to just choose not to offer. Just wanna give you guys access to some data based on fact to see what we could do, what we might wanna do. I mean, I've heard there were some issues with point-to-pay in the past. It seems like at least now they are used by the majority for one reason or another. I'm not sure if it's a good reason, a bad reason, what it is, but it's just factually interesting to go out and look and see what all of the different options were. Think it'll probably end up happening again, it's the Arbor's goes, people aren't here. I know we're sort of sitting this weird limbo spot with the developer. One thing we can do is prevent it from happening again by adopting an ordinance that sets up a timeline and a process for how developments have to be submitted to the board. They cannot just sit sort of in a floating state for years on end once they've been to the Planning Commission once. Would encourage you guys to add that to a future meeting and really come up with sort of a working list, as I talked about last time, on what we can do to move things forward. Thanks, everybody.
This is great, thank you. Just one correction where it says next to Sciop currently on pause, I just wanna make sure the public is aware.
Yeah.
Invoice Cloud is still available, you can pay your taxes and bills through that still.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? Please come on up.
I'm also not a resident of the Township. I'm from State Senator Shanks' office, so I won't rehash what everything are my compatriot from Representative Dingle's office said, but we're also here listening. If you have any concerns with state agencies or departments, we're here to help you. And I just want you to know, we're here to support you with any matter that you'd like. Tim Hilton.
Hi. I just came to introduce myself to everyone here. My name is Annie Rice, of course, hi. My name is Janat Tramood, I am an attorney in Washtenaw County. I will be running for the open court seat in 2024. And I know most of you don't know me, I reside in Lodi Township. I am a wife, I'm a mom, I have two little girls, that's probably my most important job. And I practice all kinds of law, I do civil litigation, family law, and criminal defense. I am just starting off my campaign period. I found, I found I can work with the state, and obviously, we can't start fundraising. I can never fundraise, but my committee can't start fundraising until February. But um, we, I wanted to get a head start, just because I know how competitive it can be, and this is really important for me, something you should know, if I'm elected, I would be the first Arab and Muslim on the circuit court bench, but at all, as a judge, any judge in our county. And I think our counties would really benefit from the diversity representation that we have with respect to the residents of Washtenaw and where I feel we're kind of lagging when you look at a county like Queen, that's had this representation across the board for some time. I hope to get to know you in the coming months, I don't wanna take up the precious time that you have here. I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'm actually gonna stick around for your meeting. I know John very well, and he encouraged me to come here and, and just kind of introduce myself to you all. Of course, I'm a friend of Spink here, and, and I know Sage's mom, Jess. Our kids go to Red Room together at Discovery Center, so I hope to get to know all of you and all of you. And if you have any, I, I did, you know, my website is up, it's janatforjudge.com. If you wanna find out more about me, you can go, go take a look on there. John, should I say anything else?
Three minutes.
Alright, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk.
Thanks, Janat.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? Alright, let's turn to remote participants.
Okay, first up is Pam Boyd, go ahead, Pam.
Good evening. Pam Boyd, an active Sciop resident. I may be going over time, but I will be speaking for the entirety of Sciop Township and part of my public comments for their fiscal and physical well-being. How many of you, Board of Trustees members, had the time to read the entire 780-some pages of the packet today? Number two, what is the schedule of the work sessions for the second half of 2023 residents have been asking for? I will be repeating at each meeting of this request until you have it scheduled. Number three, I'd like to let Sciop residents know that if they would like to have a yard sign in support of the Fire and EMS Special Assessment District to be voted on in November of this year, please text me at 734-358-2548 or email me at pam@buyers, with an S, agentannarbor.com. Speaking of fire services and the upcoming vote on the SAD, I'd like to ask the board to consider allowing the Fire Department to begin charging for services given to people who live outside of Sciop Township. As we straddle two highways, there is a certain percentage of calls to the Fire Department for travelers passing through. An example that started my quest for more information was a recent car fire on Baker at the highway. Quoting from M Live article, Sciop Township Fire Department crews were called to a gas station at Baker and Jackson Roads around 2:50 PM for a car fire. "A driver had pulled off of I-94 because he noticed his car was smoking," fire official said, adding that "the driver pulled into a gas station, the car caught fire." "Four flames were coming out of the engine compartment and the top of the car's hood melted," official said. Facepalm if you are also moved. This person received help from our Fire Department for free. Another incident last week had a man, also not a resident of Sciop Township, flip his avalanche truck because, wait for it, he got a brain freeze from his Taco Bell Baja Blast Freeze. Again, no charges for our Fire Department, but wait, there is more. What about the young man who ran headlong into a utility pole also last week, reaching for his breadsticks? Also not a resident. Our Fire Department had to babysit the broken utility pole until DTE arrived to fix it as it was slowly following into the traffic right away. What to do? You see, another call came in, but our Fire Department couldn't leave, no DTE, no leave. That call had to be sent to a neighboring Fire Department. This young man also got his Fire Department services for free. As I understand it, other Fire Departments will charge using a third-party biller for services rendered to people outside their municipality. As I understand it, our ordinance allows for our Fire Department to charge for these services. I am in support of our Fire Department expanding to a second station. I am willing to pay for better, more Fire Department staff and equipment for the safety of Sciop residents. However, if I'm going to vote yes to pay for our safety needs, I believe this Township Board should allow the Fire Department to charge, charge non-locals who need Sciop's help. Reimbursements for those calls would help to pay for the wear and tear of our equipment. It would also go a long way in showing our Sciop residents that Sciop is not making residents pay for travelers whose judgment is sometimes absent. Thank you. And PS, to IT Director Chris Bailey, you are my new superhero based on your report in today's packet, and welcome to Lithia Group. You've all been, you've all come in en masse, and I commend you for it, and you've really been through the wringer. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. I don't have a name, it's Samsung.
They know who they are?
I hope so. Samsung, let's Hello?
Yeah.
Next up is Rob Hatton, so go ahead, Rob.
Rob?
Jan Halbertson? Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. It looks like Samsung is up there. Do you want me to speak, or would you like Samsung?
I think, go ahead.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to mention to the Board of Trustees and any DDA members that are here that at the Planning Commission last evening, we discussed in having a working session on August 10th, and we would like to make it a special working session jointly with the Board of Trustees and the DDA. And it is all about the vision for the Jackson Road Corridor, and we're gonna be talking about acceptable land uses, density, residential affordability, and other goals and priorities, especially turning that into a multimodal transportation corridor. So I hope, you know, you will accept the invitation and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you, Jan. Okay, Samsung, try it again. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, there you go, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is, uh, thank you, Riser, Sciop resident. I'd like to talk about Heritage Woods. Back in March of '23, in the attachment HW, information on page 15 under approval is based upon the following conditions. Look at number eight. Why did the four trustees pass the PUD when the meeting in November 22 states the approval is based upon the following conditions? Number eight states that there must be a good faith negotiation to continue relative to the access/agreement agreement for the neighbors. Where is your proof now and back then? You have no proof. Why did you pass this without any proof? 100% of the time, you put the horse in front of the buggy. I believe the four of you did not do that. Another analogy is that your 16-year-old child asks for a car. Your remark is that if you get on the honor roll, we will buy you a car. Before the first semester report, you buy a car for that child. You just lost your bargaining power. You get it? But a belper doesn't have to do anything. As of today, at 3:24, I sent an email to Dan Johnson asking for their response from Alan Green, their legal counsel, from our legal counsel Fred Lucas, a response to our request. No response, nothing has changed because the lack of the teeth from the four of you. I appreciate Mark reaching out to Dan Johnson, something that should have happened a year ago. What was the rush to pass this? Thank you very much. Have a good night, goodbye.
Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Dave. Next up Next up is Pat.
Hi, my name is Patrick Shields, I live at 1869 Snowberry Ridge Road in the Uplands. I'm been a resident for 25 years, been on the board for 18, Board of the Uplands for 18, six years as the president. I serve on the road advisory committee, the zoning board of appeals, and served on the Transportation Alternative Planning Committee. I'm calling today to thank the members of the board, the leadership of the Transportation Alternative Planning Committee the members of the Board, the leadership of the Transportation Alternative Planning Committee, the Parks, Pathways, and Preserves Committee, and the Boards of the Uplands, the Ravines, the Meadowlands, and Hometown Village in putting together this plan to dramatically improve the safety along Upland Drive and SiO Ridge Road. I also want to thank the members of the Board that are involved in the negotiations to reduce the cost. And I urge you to finally pass this, this initiative. It's been a long and tortured path, many years to get here. Just a little bit of context. This, the SiO Ridge Road is the densest part of the community. There are over a thousand homes, two hundred apartments, two bus lines, as well as school bus lines. If you were to open up a Google Map and take a look at the photo that is on Google Map for Upland Drive, you will see, can't remember if it's two or three children with large backpacks walking down the middle of Upland Drive where there are thousands of cars and dozens of buses every day. So this is an important initiative. I'm glad you guys have gotten here, and I urge you to finally approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Next up is Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
Rob Pattinson, SiO Township President. As a representative of SiO Township Presidents for Responsible Government, I ask for five minutes. First of all, I would like to thank this Board for responding to my email and having a healthy discussion about respect. I asked this Board to amend the rules of order to put any business involving staff at the beginning of the meeting so that they can go home and not sit for five, six, or seven hours. I'll note that you did not do that tonight. You put the fire at the beginning of business, so I'll have to sit there for two or three hours as you go through the rest of the agenda. Thank you, Trustee Brizow, for saying two weeks ago you would like to address questions the residents ask. Let's put this to the test. I have a list. You might want to write these down. There was a gentleman who lived on Marshall Road who came to the, before the BOT to ask for help getting the road repaired. Mark Thompson said he would meet with him. What was the result of that meeting? What plans are in place to help that resident? A month ago, Trailwoods developers said they would be meeting with SiO officials. There were members of the neighborhood who asked to be part of that meeting. Did the meeting take place? What was the health of that meeting? Last night, the Planning Commission meeting Doug Lewan said he was, he has provided planning and development reports for the last two or three weeks at the request of Manager Parker. Those reports have not been in the agenda packets. Please include them in the future and collect the past ones and put them in the next agenda packet. At the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, I asked Laura Krebs if there was an index of all approvals and denials over the past few years. She said there is not, but she could compile it. Please ask Carlisle Ortmann to compile that index so residents can review similar applications to their own as they prepare to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Something, a case number column, a description column, and an approve or deny column as an index. Also, Utilities Director gave SiO six months' notice. He was leaving. It's now six weeks to his departure. What is the status of his replacement? At the last meeting, it was revealed that checks were found at the bank a year after they were lost. Could we please have a written report on what exactly happened with those checks? And how did SiO resolve the fact that they had then had two checks from each parcel owner? One issue that came up during the weekend's discussion was time burn. A well-run and efficient meeting will minimize that. SiO has complex meetings that try and resolve many complex issues at a time. I suggest that trustees ask for working sessions to discuss and resolve the issues so that when it comes to the Tuesday meetings, much of the work is already done. Trustee Brizow asked for a working session to discuss hiring a finance director months ago. If you remember, Trustee Brizow, you said it was reasonable to expect we would hire, we could hire a finance director in six or eight weeks at one of your first board meetings. We still don't have a finance director, which is kind of awkward after you said just this weekend, judge the SiO Board by what they do, not what they say. So this weekend, we talked about respecting staff and each other. One thing we didn't discuss was cruelty. That can be the only description of what SiO did to our finance manager. For the past two years, while she and her family have been surviving terrible stress, SiO Township did absolutely nothing to help her. Letting her work from home was the absolute minimum SiO could do. Why has this township not hired a single staff person to assist Finance Manager Madi? Not doing so was cruel while she went through hell. To date, we have spent $151,103.8 on Mike Homie and Foster Swift. Two weeks ago, I said that represents a fire and a half for the three firefighters we are short to run safely. Today, I will remind you that $151,000 represents a year and a half of a finance director. Imagine if we had a finance director for the last year and a half instead of an attorney who admitted he makes a lot of money from how dysfunctional we are. And there's the crux of the problem we have in SiO. Just one example is how our supervisor has blocked every attempt to hire a finance director for two years. If we wait for him to lead the effort, it's not going to happen. In fact, this Board needs to act as if it doesn't have a supervisor. Each of you needs to put forward motions to get things done. If you wait for the supervisor to take the lead, it will never happen. You need to be proactive and have courage. The first thing you can do to bring healing to this township is to put forward a motion undoing the power grab of 2021. The supervisor stripped power to control the journals and ledgers because he got caught changing data and had his authorization removed. That is why you put together the job description you did, so that he could strip that power from the clerk. Each one of you has the power to draft a motion that will undo that power grab. That instantly resolves the legal issue we have spent $151,000 on. This is just one example of what you can do independent of the supervisor. There are many things in limbo that you can do this for. The days of giving the supervisor the benefit of the doubt have to be over. You have to act independently of him to get the healing and progress accomplished. If you wait for him to lead, it will never happen. And then lastly, Lithia has proposed paying $5,000 towards the Fire Department for their PUD. With a billion-dollar company like that, I would submit that that is too little. And we have a huge need for a ladder truck and a substantial contribution towards the ladder truck needs to be part of that PUD. Thank you for the extra time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Jonathan Greemer. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hello, good evening. Well, I'll take a little less time than Rob because everything he just said to the trustees about the supervisor, just go ahead and double-click on that a second time for me. I did want to address a couple other issues. I read about the SAD refund, so the $1.6 million that you're refunding. I guess you guys decided to stick to the law and refund it the way that the law says you should refund it. That's great. I wish you had collected it the way the law says you should have collected it. Because I was forced to pay for a full parcel when I sold my land a couple of years into the PUD. So in other words, I've paid for a, for all of the Trailwoods parcels that were on the former land that I owned, and now they will receive the refund. It's only a couple hundred dollars. I don't care too much, but I raised this only as a point that your idea, the, well, we've always done it this way, and it's always been fine. That doesn't hold up, and it's not fine, and it's not how you should be doing things. Because here we are, perfect example, documented with numbers. You guys took money from me, and you're refunding it to my neighbors. Secondly, speaking of SAD, I read the IT report. As somebody who's worked in IT for thirty years, directly, hands-on, I can tell you that you have the right person in the role. You probably need to clone him more than once because the amount of work that he's described is excessive. It shows a lack of attention to IT for the last thirty years. Honestly, the things he's describing, the lack of labeling for network connections are challenges we all solved in the nineties. Nobody has those challenges anymore. You guys are thirty years behind the curve. I sent you also in your discussions, moving forward, there's an organization called Township of Excellence in Michigan. And I sent the Board a link to that. There's two documents of relevance. I encourage you to read them. They are excellent categories for thinking about which silos we need to fix and maybe prioritizing those here in SiO Township. The one thing that became clear to me last night watching the Planning Commission meeting is that while some of our boards are practical, others are assuming that if you pray for rainbows, they'll fly out of unicorns. It's just amazing that they, they turned down an application for a drive-through because they think that somehow this is going to make Jackson Road more walkable. I mean, I get it. We have to start somewhere, but really, Township of Excellence, please check it out and use it as a guideline. Thank you for the Park Road uplift. It is starting today or yesterday. Looks like it's going to get done this week. After two decades of ignoring it, well, ignorance as well, but two decades of ignoring it, it'll be nice to be able to drive down that road without damaging tie rod ends and other front-end components in my car. I do want to ask why last meeting, the lost checks were presented as a resolved issue? It was the first the public had heard of it? And I think it's normal for the public to go, oh, that was resolved, really? And not to hear, I've addressed this already three months ago. Just didn't, the whole presentation didn't make sense. We spoke with the bank, and they acknowledged that they did lose the checks for a year. My only question is, why are we still banking with a bank that would lose checks for a year? Seems like that is a pretty, pretty big mistake for a bank to make. And we still don't have a finance director. Have a great night.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else wish to speak? Please raise your hand. Margaret Engel, please go ahead.
Good evening. I'd like to say a few words about the Knights of Columbus Proposal. I followed this closely for twenty months, and the Township has spent a lot of time and money and energy on this proposal. And the Planning Commission carefully considered this proposal before they reached their decision to recommend denial. It was a good decision. It was grounded in fact and reason and the law, and it takes into account SiO's best interests. In this whole discussion, the Gellman aspect has garnered the most attention in the headlines. And its importance is really paramount. It's an incredibly serious issue. But Norfolk simply failed to address it. They had a year and a half to fulfill the Planning Commission's hydrogeologic testing requirement, but they didn't do it. And even beyond Gellman, the Planning Commission discussed other important shortfalls like density, the risk to community health and welfare, the inadequate infrastructure, the burden on the township utilities, the effect on the essential character of the surrounding area. And there was a long discussion in the June 12th meeting about the dearth of community benefit, which Mr. Reiser spoke to at some length. We know PUDs have to provide a community benefit, and they simply didn't demonstrate that. Planning Chair Jan Calvertson put it really interestingly. She said, you know, pushing the density is not a community benefit, nor is the fact that the proposal takes what has been a historic recreation area open to the public and makes it inaccessible to the public. Legacy carbon emissions that are going to come out of this, not a community benefit. So the plan is, I've read a lot of the master plan, and it's just not consistent with our master plan goals, which a PUD plan is required to be. It's throughout the master plan that we talk about how SiO wants to keep higher-density development within the area already served by sewer and water, which this area is not. And the plan undermines SiO's environmental goals in other ways. It's going to increase vehicular traffic. And remember that this would be built in a designated bio reserve in a time of urgent climate crisis. It sets a terrible precedent because it uses one of these independent private package sewers. And if we start allowing those all over the township, I think we're going to have a leave a really bad environmental legacy in thirty years when they start to fail. So the master plan's land use goal number one is that land use should be consistent with community desires. And clearly, this development is not. Dozens of people have written and spoken out against this proposal, so I ask that you vote to deny this PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Margaret. At this time, I don't see anything hands raised.
All right, then we'll move on.
I'd like to make just a few comments, Will, because I do want to keep it, to my promise, I didn't want to keep things a bit interactive.
Sure.
So to Rob's point, he brought up twelve issues. I did try to take copious notes as fast as I could to keep up with them. I can't answer all of those, Rob. I can answer some of those. The Finance Director is in motion through Township Manager Joyce Parker. So she has a RFP in play now, if I'm not mistaken, and that's in motion. I don't know if you care to comment on that?
Sure, I can comment. Primarily, we requested proposals for Finance Director Services. And all proposals were due as of the 24th, which was yesterday. We received four proposals. We're going to be interviewing the four firms and presenting a recommendation for approval at our next board meeting. It's taking some time, but I think we have really good firms that have submitted their proposals.
My comment, only comment to that would be whatever, Clerk Flintoff, our Township Manager and our Treasurer approve, I'm pretty much going to follow suit, right? I mean, my opinion really isn't, shouldn't, shouldn't really matter. You guys, you guys, the experts come to that. Time burn, you're going to see me be very, pretty adamant about time burn. In terms of the stripped powers and things, I think I can have a separate conversation. I want to go on that here. That's a longer conversation, but happy to have it with you on a one-on-one. And in regards to IT that Jonathan brought up, I have a meeting with Chris and with Township Manager to really kind of review all the IT processes that exist today. So you know my background. I've been in IT for thirty-five years. I've even brought it that. And we're going to review all the security policies and practices that are here and maybe make some recommendations of companies we can either practices we can change or technologies we can leverage, but to get us up to speed to protect data. It's no secret that security breaches are commonplace now. The average breach for an organization is now $5.4 million in corporate world. I don't know what it is in township world, but the idea that we'd ever lose anyone's, any of a residence's personal identification, and their identity is stolen or lewdry somehow would be, be bad. So let's take some, you know, ounce of prevention versus the pound of cure. I can tell you that in my world, preventing a breach versus post-breach, the factor is typically ten X. So what would it cost you to prevent that breach? What would it cost you to remediate that breach? It's literally ten times as much as this, is the kind of the goal. So hopefully that answers some of those. Some of those I can't, I can't get to because they don't fall under my, under my auspices. But I will tackle the ones that kind of fall under my purview.
Regarding Rob's comment, Manager Thompson and I did meet with the gentleman on Marshall Road, and we went over the issues. Mark took that to the Row Commission, and they said that that's just the way it was. So we are going to have, or there's a little bit more to it, but basically the Row Commission isn't going to do anything to fix the driveway. It's just, it was. It's just, it was built up too high and the crown will just be worn down over time. That will hopefully mitigate some of it. And Manager Parker and Supervisor Hathaway and myself will be meeting on Friday and talking more about what happens when a resident complains or has issues regarding their roads, because we're having a lot of work done right now. So we're going to figure out a plan.
Anyways, one last one. So I did from the last meeting, light a fire under Mr. Daniels, Heritage Wood. I called him and extended, hey, you need to get with Mr. Spicer, Mr. Yeah, I believe it is.
You mean Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Daniel Johnson. I said, you need to get this resolved with the residents. Let's go. So if he hasn't done that, he said he would. I just need to know that and I will light a bigger fire.
Keep track of that, please.
I I will do that. I will. I will ping him again tomorrow and find out. But I did even list when there's good faith negotiations fail, what what is the path, the path to resolution? There's a fairly definitive procedure that that can happen. I'd like to see us not go down that road. I'd just like to see this thing worked out, but if it comes down to hardball, there is a hardball way to get it done. It will ultimately get resolved now either way.
Thank you. And the meeting with the Trailwoods developer internally is Thursday at one.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, skipping over approval of minutes. Approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from the regular meeting of July eleventh. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Well, I would like to include, I read through them, of course. You know, a couple of times when we're having a discussion about the ACH process, I think during Kathy. And I asked a couple of times, well, where, what program are we using when we take a residence form and their information and then uploading? What is the process? And I was not answered, but my comment, I said it twice, is not in here. Where where was that? That was during. That's like, could you make a proposed amendment to the minutes, please? Sure. Okay, I'm making a proposal.
Set a place in the minutes.
Well, it was such a. And if 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 the issue is more that you still need that information, we can make a note of it. We had a. Yes, it would be nice to to know. So I mean, we need to know that for the under.
Well, that discussion was moved from reports towards to towards the end of the meeting.
Oh, wait a minute.
Page fifteen somewhere.
Fourteen, that's where it began, it looks like. Yeah. So it was. Yeah, so it says Carrie said that she thought the entire board was in favor of ACH payments, but not under the process being used and
you'd like your question.
Yeah, because I didn't say, of course, we already have the ACH payments. We're already in favor of that, but that's not what I said. So I would like what is the process being used, the software or whatever? I mean, I, that was my question.
That was the question that you would like reflected in the minutes.
Yes, please. Okay.
I was just going to offer a couple of edits. Page two is where they would start. So down at the bottom, I said, it says, in response, Hathaway noted. And then several times it refers to residents. And it's quite possible that that was the term I used, but just in in this context, I think to make sense, it should say adjacent residents. So if that can be added to sort of a modifier to residents, it appears three times. And then I would change the last sentence. Comma, and their attorney. I think that
Okay.
It will make more sense that way. Are there any other corrections to the minutes?
I move their approval.
Moved by Reiser. Or by Noel. All those in favor say aye. As opposed, that's our approved as corrected. Now we have the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move the consent agenda as amended?
So I'm over.
Moved by Reiser. Support by Noel.
Yeah, I just want to clarify consent agenda as amended with G one, G three and G four.
Okay. We'll need a roll call vote because it contains payments.
Great. And per our rules, we're starting tonight with Reiser. Reiser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer? Flintoff? Yes. Brazil?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted, seven zero.
That brings us to reports. We have a number of written reports, some of which sort of straggled in after the agenda was posted last week. So I sent some out to make sure everyone had them. Are there any questions or comments about any of the items in reports?
I just had one I wanted to raise. Jan Culbertson mentioned the special meeting. I mentioned this to John, but there's an idea of having a shared work session between the EDA, the Board and the Planning Commission on Thursday, August tenth at seven PM. And I've suggested that we call it as a special meeting in order to encourage attendance of at least a majority of the board. The topic is the Jackson Road Boulevard. And so if there's no objection, I'd like to make a a motion to call that meeting. I'd like to make a motion to call for a special meeting of the Board of Trustees to discuss the vision for the Jackson Road Corridor on Thursday, August tenth, seven PM in meeting hall. Topics will include acceptable land uses, residential density, affordability and other other goals and priorities for this very important corridor. We'll be drawing from the master plan and the Jackson Road overlay district. The Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority are invited to attend and participate.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by.
And thank you for the help. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote by voice. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, special meeting motion passes. Are there other questions on other reports? I'm suggesting maybe we wait on the ME DC one so that we keep that last because I think that may, I expect some conversation about that. Are there questions, for example, for the Treasurer's report? Which was just distributed. We'll add, actually, we'll have to get, I'll have to get that from you and add that to the packet so that it's.
Okay, I can add it. I always add them.
All right, all right. Other reports, are there reports that weren't in the packet that people would like to make? Is that what you're raising? All right.
Just a very brief Gellman update. We were informed by Eagle and the Washtenaw County Health Department that there were many detections in the recent well testing that they did in Syo. They tested two hundred and four drinking water wells and there were thirty positive detections. Some of these are new. The county has not released any of the data yet because they're still compiling it. And they don't want to release it until it's organized, is what they've told me. They anticipate they'll release it by the end of this week. Card meeting is next week. They want to have it out before the card meeting.
And that was using a less sensitive testing method, wasn't it?
It was using the sensitivity down to zero point five parts per billion. So it was a more sensitive testing method. That's what they had been doing.
But not as sensitive.
Not as sensitive as what we did with method five twenty two. Do you know the area? Is it the same area that we tested before? Or a lot of it is in the same area, but there are some new wells.
And Kathy, will the county be contacting the homeowners directly?
They have already done so. Perfect. Yep. And I've heard from a couple of homeowners.
Have these homeowners owned well or?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's only drinking water wells that were tested. That's it. Thank you. We lost power yesterday for nine hours, so I couldn't do anything. So that's why there's no written report and I'll submit a written report in the future soon.
Thank you. Well, if there aren't questions about other reports, let me introduce mine because I know there are some questions about that and I welcome them. So this was prompted in part by two things. One, we had to do a, the township had to do a quarterly report on these ME DC grants. It's one of the requirements is to update the state. And so we had to gather a bunch of information about what has been spent so far and report that. And we also have a work product that was paid for with the ME DC funds. This was something the board approved a while ago to have OHM, our engineering consultant, study the Zee Road overpass over I ninety four to determine what kinds of pedestrian improvements that structure would support. Because that's, that was the goal. That's what we sought the money for. And so that report, that memo, technical memo is enclosed along with my summary of a current status. And I also included just for reference, a Zee Road pathway thematic, so that people can sort of have a sense of what the different phases are that are referenced. The the bottom line is that we spent the portion of the first grant that we received in twenty twenty one for the purpose that that money was received for and submitted the required documentation and got the full reimbursement for that from the state. The second part of that first grant was the Zee Road overpass pedestrian improvements. And as you can see from the OHM memo, they're the recommended or the 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 things that we hope to do, for example, putting up a barrier to protect pedestrians that cross or widening the sidewalk, both of those things M dot turned down. So we can't make the changes to the overpass that we had hoped to make. And that's, that sort of raises a question about what to do with those funds. And I wanted to sort of lay that out for the board to think about. My hope is that we can get the Parks Preserves Pathways Committee to look at the situation and give us their recommendations that the their, the committee and our Director of Parks Preservation Pathways, Anna Kohn. And and then, once we have their recommendation and we have the other work product from OHM, which is preliminary engineering for phase five of the Zee Road pathway, the board can deliberate and make a decision about what to do.
So we have some flexibility in how those funds are, have to do something. I mean, I have biked across Zee Road hundreds of times. So I'm very familiar with it, going over that overpass. I I think I'm the only one that's ever gone over. I mean, I've never seen anyone other than me and maybe a few other cyclists. So I don't know why we'd spend, I I can just think of better ways to use the money than that anyway, I guess, where I was going to head with that. You know, can we use it for, well, again, you know, great examples like the bridge that was going across, you know, down bottom of Zee Valley, that's already allocated for those types of things for more effective use of pathways.
You mean across the river?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. So the the.
Well, I know you do, but I'm just saying, more, things are more, that are going to be more utilized by pedestrians than something that's less utilized, such as the overpass.
Let me just respond quickly that, because it's a little confusing. There are two grants that we received and there's a little bit of overlap between them. The second grant was received in twenty twenty two and a portion of it was for crossing the Huron River. It's not the full cost of what it will cost to cross the Huron River because we have to build a dedicated pedestrian bridge. We can't use the auto bridge that's.
Can one pay for the first fifty feet? They only pay for the second fifty feet. Is there a way to pull that off or somebody leaves the framework, they only leave this amount or something like that?
I don't know. It does bring up all sorts of comical kinds of ski jump images, but the 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 grant funds for, from the second grant that are sort of earmarked, I guess, within or or budgeted within that grant for that purpose are nine hundred thousand dollars. Now, we've already authorized spending from that, those funds to have OHM do preliminary engineering. But one option would be to shift the remaining funds from the Zee Road overpass within the the budget of that first grant to that phase of the Zee Road pathway to the north where it crosses the river. That's what, that's that's allowed within the parameters of the ME DC grant administration. So that's, that's actually what I'm hoping that the Parks Preserves Pathways Director and the committee will evaluate and give us.
Yeah, I'm sure they know where the people travel the most, I would assume.
So 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 the the, we have the money left over from the Zee Road overpass that the M dot says we can't spend for what we wanted to. From the first grant, we have most of the money left. And I made a little math error in my report. It's actually one million six hundred and twenty five thousand left in the second grant that we can, that we still have to spend. So there's, there's, those are the funds that are still pending, they're still available. Some of it comes upfront, fifty percent comes upfront. And then, once you have the expenses and can document them, then you submit the the proof and you get the balance of the grant funds.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor it right now, but I'm just, all I'm saying is, let's just not take, just because somebody's giving us money, let's just go build something that's necessarily beneficial to the, to our residents or to Syo. That's all I'm saying. Let's try to find something more effective than an overpass over a Zee Road. Over the highway.
Over the highway.
Over the highway, yeah, on Zee Road.
Yeah, I just, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So before we we jump to the money, it sounds, I mean, I'm relieved to hear that there's no discussion with the state about moving money around. And if there is discussion with the state, first of all, I would ask that our Parks Director, Anna Kohn, and our Township Manager, Joyce Parker, be the people running point on that, please. Any budget amendment would, of course, come to the board. Any grant amendment would, of course, come to the board for approval. So I'm glad to hear we don't need to do that before August fifteenth. I want to back up. We approved that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for this trip in May of twenty twenty two. In November of twenty twenty two, we allocated forty one thousand to OHM to do this study. I see it's dated June eighth. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding the main points of this study from the engineer, because I I haven't, I know maybe the committee's talked about it, but I haven't seen this study before. And so I guess what I want to understand is, it looks like they provided two options. And and I guess where I'm, where I'm trying to understand is, when in the process did it get rejected by M dot?
Well, actually, we have Matt.
That'd be great.
Analyst that he can respond directly.
Yeah, I kind of want to just hear from our engineer.
And and just to be clear, it's the the date on it is not when I received it. I received it later in June.
Sure. Okay. Just because this is where we last left off. We sent OHM off to do this study and now we're hearing back from them.
Good evening. Hello.
Did you hear the earlier discussion?
Yeah, I did. I did. And yeah, and we've, when we, we provided that report, I don't know, a month or two ago, I believe. And I believe I copied most of the board, but I'll I'll look back at the exact date when.
No, I might, I might have missed it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. But in essence, the 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 fact of the matter is, we worked with the Row Commission and squared them away with different options on shifting the lanes to the east and really tried to make a wider pathway. And and to Trustee Brazil's comments, I agree. I've I've worked and played and 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 lived out in that area for a long time and you don't see hardly anybody crossing. And I think part of the reason of that is just how uninviting and kind of scary it is to cross it. So the 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 goal of the project was to really create a a situation where there was a barrier wall, kind of mimic what they are currently doing on Huron Street or Interfaceline Road and and connect it. and, and connect it to Jackson Road. So when we got into that, we worked with MDOT and the type of bridge beam, box beam that is there doesn't really allow you to penetrate the deck more than the, the four or five inches of concrete that's on there. In order to put a barrier wall, you have to do what they call a mash study. And so you, you model basically different trucks and vehicles crashing into it and making sure that, 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 that wall won't be compromised or break. And in order to do that, you had, we've had to model different types of structures that would support such a crash or an impact. And bottom line is, that type of bridge that MDOT built will not support that study and hold up to any type of significant impact. We looked at epoxying, we looked at sinking it in. MDOT will not let us penetrate the box beams, because it will compromise the bridge, the bridge decking. So we found that out after we submitted. Of course, MDOT, they make you calculate and do things. You submit, you wait for the review, you go back, you get comments back and you do iterations. So it was a ways into the study. To make this a little bit more worth the township's while, we did try to come up with various recommendations or options. There's some improvements that need to happen on either side of the bridge. And really, the reason why we didn't go full design is because we were concerned about MDOT's stance on that. So that's why we did the study instead of the full-blown design, because we were kind of leery that MDOT would allow such a, such a barrier wall. We did try to work with MDOT and we had a couple of meetings with them to just improve ADA accessibility and say, well, if we can't do a barrier wall, which is your standard at that speed limit, can we at least make it safer, more inviting, wider? Because people are still going to cross. And the answer we got back was, no, you can't upgrade that without bringing it up to our standard. And because our standard won't work with that bridge box span, we don't want you to touch it at all. And that's a typical response, because once you touch something, you have to bring it all the way up to the standard. So really, the only options you have are, you actually have three options. You can spend money on improving either end of the bridge and gap the bridge and wait for MDOT to do something, can do nothing at all, and just wait for the bridge to be rehabbed by MDOT and work with them at that time. And hopefully, at that time, it would be an MDOT expense or a shared expense between the township and MDOT. Or, and this is like the way out there solution is a standalone structure, which to me is ridiculous amounts of money and probably something that isn't in the budget, at least right now. So I don't know, I hope that answers your question, clerk.
Yeah, that, that's helpful. I'm just, I'm looking back at our, our minutes from May 2022, when we deliberated on going after this grant and kind of the, the purpose of it. And, and certainly, there was the idea of making the pedestrian cross, crossing over that. I remember Representative Luzinski, or Lita Luzinski at the time, mentioned, you know, her, 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 her memory of trying to cross that with her small children. But also, there was more discussion about kind of more broadly, how we can make all those various intersections safer. So Matt, is there anything left on the table and the mix here? Or is it all off the table?
I mean, you, you can do anything on the Zee Road corridor, except for the actual bridge itself. You can't really touch that, because in order to touch that, based on the, the speed limit, you have to have a barrier wall. And there's really no other option to build such a barrier wall at that speed limit.
Okay.
The township could go to Lansing, you could run it up the flagpole, you could get state reps involved. You can see if the road commission and MDOT would be interested in a speed limit reduction. There's a lot of other things.
Sure.
Been, but it's like, that's a lot of effort, so.
But, but Matt, I'm sorry, one more, one more thing, Mark. But, but I'm saying, is there enough to do off the bridge and without the intervention? Because we, we'd had the commitment from the DDA to dedicate some other TIF revenue to this. This was supposed to be, you know, part of a larger part of money to make that area safer.
Yeah, I believe, and I'd have to go back and look at the study, but I think we had some, just some basic recommendations. I think there's a cost estimate to just basically improve from the north side of the bridge through the Metzger property, and then from the south side of the bridge through the sports bar property. Those are fairly minor improvements, so I, I don't remember the number right off my head. It's less than a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And that would be the, okay, I'm looking for that in your study, Matt, I'm sorry.
So, so what I can tell you, I mean, again, I've gone over this bridge a thousand times, at least, at least. And I can tell you where the danger spots are, is when people are turning on to hop on, hop on I-94. So unless you're going to fix that.
Yes, and that was. You guys, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Can I call on Trusty Knowles? She was next, I believe.
Yeah, we did discuss the access ramps and issues with those and possibly reconfiguring those last time. And I'm wondering, still, are these approaches going to be safe for pedestrians and bikers to be crossing?
You mean the on-off ramps?
Yes, the on-off ramps.
Right, that's where, that's where the danger lies.
Well, Matt, we talked about how there are some relatively inexpensive changes that could improve the sort of the definition of pedestrian crossing at those points. Do you want to talk at all about that?
Yeah, we, we looked at the north side and the south side, both ramps, and those are very wide throats. We actually talked to Brighton Transportation Service Center, TSC, MDOT office, to see if that intersection had any warrants, crash warrants, or any, anything that demanded a signal. And it does not currently. You know, the, the good example is that Huron Street in Ypsilanti, where they just added a pedestrian crosswalk. They added a light, some mast arms there. And they said that that wasn't warranted and wouldn't be permitted by MDOT at this time. So some striping, we looked at some island elongation, just to give like a, on the south side of the bridge, like a refuge between the two on and off ramps. But that inhibited a little bit of truck churning radii. So, but at that, that point, honestly, we didn't really take it that much further, because we knew really the crux of the study was the, the barrier wall and just giving people more space to match up with the Zee Road pathway. So, I mean, if the township wanted to just look at the further developing and gaping out the bridge, that's a possibility, but we didn't feel like, at that point in time, like, it becomes a pretty simplistic project, to be honest. It's, it's more or less a road commission permit project, and MDOT's really not involved, nor do they have much say at that point. There, there, yes, we're in the right of way, we'll need a permit, but simple striping, painting, some delineators, some signage is really all that's, all that's necessary, some concrete work.
If that can improve safety, I mean.
Yeah, it's something, it's something. But I mean, it's, it's a far cry from what we were hoping for. And really, MDOT doesn't even put these types of bridge beams in anymore because of the difficulty it gives for additional improvements that needs to be put on the bridge. So when, when Zee Road Bridge gets replaced one day, that's your, that's the township's opportunity to really improve.
Matt, what, what do you think is like, what would you project for when that would be? When it would come to for replacement?
I, I, I don't know, but I'm guessing 20 plus years. There could be some, there could be some decking or some, some rehab done, and that might be an opportunity, window of opportunity to sit down and talk to them. So I would recommend to keep the conversation up with MDOT. We can help with that and be aware of kind of what's coming, if there's any I-94 construction or bridge repair work. You know, City of Novi just worked with MDOT on doing something similar to that. But again, those are different types of bridges, so it, it is a difficult. And, and just so you're aware too, Baker Road is the exact same type of bridge. So we're going to have the same problem down there. And I know there's some PUD money set aside for improving that corridor.
So.
Question, Liberty Road Bridge, do you know when they're going to do the repairs on that? MDOT?
No.
I've been concerned about it, that I, you know, they, they rushed to get it open. And I thought, man, they're never going to finish this.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have, I mean, I could find out.
Could you find out? I've had people ask me that.
Yep, I'll, I'll call.
It's not in SIO, but it's right by Suck.
I just want to make sure that everyone has, has a chance to speak if they want to. Okay, why don't we, why, I'm sorry, did you?
Oh, I was just going to provide an update regarding the utility director's position.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, so primarily, at this point, we, we've had an opportunity to take a look at what the options are. And I've been meeting with the staff that's there to get a sense of what should take place, just based on some of their comments. Also, I've had discussions with OHM. We're at a point where we're going to advertise the position, but I'm also exploring maybe an interim step where we might have either someone that has experience come in and work with us so many days per week until the position is filled. And in conjunction with that, consider maybe elevating existing staff to support the operation. So that's primarily where I'm at right now.
That sounds good, thank you, Joyce.
Are there further questions or comments on reports, or should, can we move on? Why don't we move on then? We have, just, just to mention that we have a written report from both, and this was commented on by some members of the public already, from our IT Director. We also have a detailed color report with illustrations from Parks, Preserves and Pathways. So I encourage people to look at those now that they're included in the package, if you have already. So that brings us to public hearings. So we're in Lithia, so please, if the representatives from the applicant will come forward. So the way that we will do this, this is for the Verbin Lithia Project, the planned unit development. And this is final site plan approval. So when we get to this stage, we hold a public hearing at the Board of Trustees, and that's what's happening tonight, where the board is not taking action, everyone understands that. But this is an opportunity for the applicant to make a brief presentation. Then we'll hear from our planning consultant. And if they have comments, our engineering consultant, and then we'll open it up to members of the public. And then, once members of the public have had a chance to speak, they'll close the public hearing, and then there'll be an opportunity for the board to discuss. And that could be also back and forth with the applicant, if there's, if that seems appropriate or called for.
And, and while on the process, because we're getting this public hearing a little sooner than it's ready for action, I understand there may be some changes. I just want to put out there, it's also possible we could have a second public hearing if needed.
The board could decide to do that, I suppose. But the one that's, we have to have one, that's, that's the requirement. So tonight's public hearing will meet that requirement. Whether, what the process looks like going forward will determine forward. So with that, I'd like to invite the applicants from Verbin Lithia to introduce themselves. You have maybe 10 minutes to sort of quick, give a quick summary, and then we'll turn to our consultants and then to the public.
Thank you very much. My name is Jeff Huda with Now I Can Frownless Engineers. With me tonight is Anne Breck with Lithia Automotive. We've got Jason Longhurst, he's going to be the IT specialist on the presentation. And we've got Shane Burley, he's the architect for the project. So we really appreciate the time to come and see you guys tonight. This has been a very long road. I think we've had a lot of changes in faces as we've gone through the process over the last few years. Some of the words that have been used to describe the development as we have proposed it are as follows, transformative. We're looking at things that are potentially going to change the way SIO Township is doing business as it relates to these types of projects, imaginative, as it relates to landscaping and other types of improvements, sustainable. This has been at the forefront of what you have asked for, and it's what we have delivered in the way this project is packaged. So far, it's been controversy-free, like on wood here. All of the public hearings to date have been very positive, only positive comments have come from the public. So we're very pleased about that. We've looked at this as a catalyst for future development for the community. We've looked at, and I think the Planning Commission agreed, that the corridor, especially in this area, is very tired, very tired looking. And it's very likely that this will be a catalyst for the redevelopment of the corridor in this area. It's a model development. This is one of the things that the community, the Planning Commission, looked for from us as a part of the overall project to make sure that the standards that we achieve for this project is something that can be looked upon as you guys move forward with your sustainability goals and objectives. Minimal impact. The, the impact utilities, the impact on the environment has been mitigated across the board and innovated. A lot of innovation in this project as it relates to dealerships, rethinking how dealerships will be constructed moving into the future. As far as the history of the project, just briefly, you guys, Township Board, approved the project on January 1st of 2021. Since that time, we've spent a lot of effort and time and resources in developing the plan as you see it tonight. Infiltration testing was something that was delayed in the early development as a result of the winter conditions. You can't do infiltration testing in January, you'd have to wait till the following spring. So that kind of backed up the, the overall process. We did receive final PUD approval from Planning Commission on June 26th. And we developed a design subcommittee, and this is one of the things that resonates through this project development. The plan that you see tonight is a culmination of not only the design team's goals and recommendations, but it was also the engagement of your staff in that design process, staff and township officials going through that process. So what you see today is really a culmination of a lot of that type of effort. So when we're looking at this project from east to west, the first site is the Mercedes-Benz site. It's a 35,000 plus square foot. The point of sustainability is an all-electric building, be the first of the kind in your community. So that was something that has very, very resonated with the Planning Commission. It's a zero-carbon footprint with annual reporting. This meets your sustainability goals that you, that you desire to implement for developments within the community. Going to the, further to the west, you have EV Park. EV Park is a $1 million community benefit where we are providing 12 Level 3 charging stations for community members and the traveling motoring public for I-94. It's promoting electrification in driving, which is perceived to be a community benefit. It supports electrification where it cannot be achieved. And we, reading the meeting, meeting minutes, it comes out that when you look at apartment complexes and some of the multifamily districts that you have, how do, how do those folks get engaged in electrical vehicles? So this provides opportunities for them to have a location to go to get their vehicles charged. It's a part of the national grid in the sense that there's phone apps and things that will be able to direct people to this location. People who are using this facility will be able to frequent establishments. We see this as a catalyst for some of the downtown businesses that you have as well. And then also, EV Park is promoting a non-motorized transportation initiatives with enhancement of pathways and resting areas for people that are traveling on, on non-motorized facilities. The next development to the working west is the BMW development. Similarly, it's a roughly 29,000 square foot facility, all-electric, with the same commitment for zero-carbon footprint. The entire development is proposed as a zero-carbon. The entire development is proposed as a zero-carbon footprint. The next facility is a J L R Jag Land Rover facility. We've identified it as a future development. We have a phasing plan in place. Right now, Jag Land Rover is working through their development standards, and we're waiting for those development standards to be published before we can finalize the design. That'll be something that'll be coming back before the board as a P U D amendment when that does occur. And then the final component of this is the Unit Four, which is the multi-future mixed-use development component of the, of the project. So when we look at the mixed-use, right now, the mixed-use piece is being marketed by a fireman. We do have a letter of intent with the, a daycare facility that wants, is interested in this property. And then also, a sports flex type of facility is also interested in it. We believe that the, what the catalyst to get that mixed-use component going is to see vertical construction on the initial phases of the, the project that we have. It's very, very common, it's happened within your communities where you've approved other mixed-use developments where outlot or other types of outlying developments have occurred after the fact of the primary development. So that's that piece. So Phase One is the Mercedes and the B M W, and I call it Phase Two A and Two B, that's the J L R and then the mixed-use development. The next component of the project was related to community benefits. This is a, again, an area where we were able to work collaboratively with staff and elected officials to develop the community benefit list that we have provided to you. When we look at community benefits, we are providing, proposing for parks and pathways. We have the E V Park, again, that's the million-dollar park place that is available for the entire community to use. The E V portion will be available from seven A M. to midnight. And then the non-E V portion of the park will be basically your regular park hour sunrise to sunset. We are working with the Parks Preserves and Pathways Director to develop a educational component of the project. We feel that the type of development this is, there's a lot of opportunity to educate the public in what's sustainable the development of the future really is going to look like within the community. So we're going to have sign and Q R coding, web-based type applications where people can learn about the electric buildings, can learn about charging cars, things of that nature. We're proposing a fifteen thousand dollar contribution towards maintenance of parks within the township. There was discussion at the Planning Commission level for Dog Park. When we met with committee, they felt that it was important to, it may be earmarked for Dog Park, but they, they wanted to make sure that there was some flexibility in how those funds were going to be used. So the language in the development agreement has been addressed accordingly. The next community benefit, we have utilities and township infrastructure. We'll focus on that, we are committed to a one hundred thousand dollar contribution towards the maintenance and capital improvements of your sanitary sewer collection system. We've got buildings that will be all-electric, green energy credits will be purchased off the grid for any electrical use, usage for the development. We talked about the zero-carbon commitment through annual reporting. Open space, we have thirty seven percent open space on this development where P U D ordinance requires thirty percent open space. So we've exceeded that by far. Low-impact development, if you look at the stormwater management system for the facility, it's very imaginative. It's, it's, it's really a showpiece. When this gets done, be able to see some of the precedent images that were part of the earlier presentations, but very proud and how the stormwater management of the overall development has come together. And we're eliminating six curb cuts along Jackson Road Corridor, which is also a, a community benefit. And then the, the final community benefits are life and safety. We've had firsthand experience, Lithia has, where battery fires are something that is new to the community. They need to understand how that's different than putting out a traditional fire. So the five thousand dollars that are going towards the training is really to bring, and there was suggestion that it might be a regional training session, bring in some experts that describe and discuss how, how battery fires need to be dealt with at, at the fire department level. And then lastly, we want to make a twenty thousand dollar contribution towards the enhancement of concrete pad shelters for bus stops along the Jackson Road Corridor. This is something that came out of the Planning Commission discussions. There was a desire to have some crosswalks along the Jackson Road Corridor. Matt may speak to this later on in his report, but the road commission was not in favor of that. But one of the things that we did feel that we could do some major enhancement are, is the alternative transportation options within the corridor and making some enhancements for the park, for the, the bus shelters. So with that, we've received many project approvals to date. We've, obviously, we talked about the Planning Commission Township Board approvals. We're good to go with M dot Water Resource Commission for Stormwater Management, we're approved. Soil erosion, we're approved. Engineering for the township, we're approved. Fire Department has approved the project. Final P U D from Planning Commission is there, and we've also gotten approval for our sanitary sewer permit. And we also have the approval from Washtenaw County Road Commission for the improvement of Delhi Drive as a public improvement. So those are, that's been approved. The only things that are outstanding, which we do believe are things that could be very easily have handled administratively after your approval, and hopefully at the next meeting. Site condominium, the site condominium, you've been provided with the Exhibit A, the Master D documents. Development agreement is all part of your packet. All of that looks, seems like it's a thorough package there. The only thing that we will be waiting on is the final Exhibit B documents, which are the actual survey documents. Typically, those are documents that are recorded prior to final certificate of occupancy. And then the last thing, the last couple of things, M P D S permit, that is actually permit by rule. As long as the soil erosion permit has been issued, which it has, the Eagle will approve the M P D S permit. That's actually applied for by the contractor physically doing the work. So we've got to get through you first before we can get the M P D S permit applied for. And the last thing was the, the final road commission approvals. Those are all offsite, there's nothing within the road commission approvals that is impacting the onsite improvements. This is for Delhi Drive. We've already gone through one round of revisions with Delhi Drive, so we resubmitted to them last week. And then also, they had asked for an updated traffic study because the duration from the original traffic study to now had lapsed, they wanted it within two years of the, the approval. That has been submitted to them, we're awaiting final comment. There's nothing that came out of the original traffic study that warranted any improvements above and beyond what we had already proposed within the plan. So we believe that what you have before you is a complete packet. But we know also that it's a significant amount of information and detail for you guys to absorb. Very unfair for us to sit here tonight to expect some sort of a, a review and approval of that. So we're here tonight to answer questions and hopefully receive any final input from you before we finalize our proposal and resubmit here in the next week. With that, turn it back to you.
Thank you. I'd like to turn to Doug Lewan.
Hello, everybody hear me? Okay. I didn't see a thumbs up, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to be brief with these comments at this point. The applicant's done a nice job summarizing the project. We all know that there's going to be no action this evening, pending review of the site condo documents and the development agreement by both our office and the township, township attorney. But short of those items, I want to talk a little bit about the process, just so everyone's, we're on the same page. So this, this is a final P U D plan. This project was reviewed last December by the Planning Commission and January by the Township Board. Granted preliminary P U D approval by the Township Board back in January. The applicant has resubmitted for final P U D review. And what that means, what final P U D review means is that the property, if approved by the Township Board, will be rezoned to this specific plan. So there is a, there is a site plan that's before you as well as the development agreement and all the other materials in effect become the new zoning for the site. So if this project is ultimately approved by the Township Board, nothing else could go on this property except as shown on the, on the approved site plan. So this tonight is the required public hearing. So this is a, whenever there's a rezoning, which this is technically a rezoning, there's required public hearing in front of the Township Board. And so that is where we're at to hear public comment this evening, get comments from the Township Board. And I think the applicant is particularly, particularly wants to hear from the board members about the site plan itself and specifically the public benefits to make sure that they are in fact on the right track prior to the next time they come in front of the Township Board. If there's any other questions I can answer, I'd be happy to try to do that. But obviously, my comments are short and sweet at this point. This is a, again, final P U D approval, or, you know, request for approval. And if approved, it's a rezoning, and the applicant would be allowed to begin construction as is, as has been presented in the site plans this evening.
Thank you. Matt, you?
Is that a question for Doug?
Oh, all right.
Doug, I do have one question. What, what is your sense, this is a four to three recommendation we got from the Planning Commission for a rather complex P U D. What's your sense of the reasons for the dissent?
There was concern, and, and I, I, I trust you all received the minutes, or were able to see the minutes.
Yeah.
But there were, I recall some concern about additional dealerships within the township moving westward on Jackson Road. There was some concern about the public benefit that was proposed. And, I mean, those were, those were two, two of the big issues, I think.
Chris Chang wanted to know because they didn't know what was going to be on the other parcel.
Yep.
He wanted, he wanted it to be a mixed use, so he wanted something, he wanted these certainty, the surety that it's going to be a mixed use, something else, whether it's this or that, so that's why he wanted to know.
Yeah, that was, that was Chris's line that didn't, he didn't want to cross was, he, he was, he was not convinced that this was being demonstrated as a true mixed-use project because of the unknown nature of the western parcel. But I, I pointed out to the Planning Commission, and I, and since Commissioner Reiser brought, has brought this point up, the township has done this before, this wouldn't be the first time that we've approved a mixed-use development without knowing what was going to be on the outlots. The, the, there's two cases really, but the, the more recent case is the two outlots that face Z Road, where now is the Leo's Coney Island and I believe a salon. And then south of that is a vacant lot that's currently under site conditional use approval for a restaurant. But when that project was first brought to the township, it was for, the only thing that was known at that time was the multifamily portion of the project to the far west. And the two lots out front were completely unknown, but it was still considered a mixed-use project. The other one is, we've been talking about recently, is the Goodrich Theater Project, and that was a P U D, so that's maybe a little more similar to this in that, you know, we knew what the Goodrich Theater was going to be, that was the only thing known at the time. And then the two outlaw parcels were unknown. We had put some basic parameters on them, but those were unknown. So this, it certainly wouldn't be without precedent that the township has approved what in, in an effect is a mixed-use project without knowing exactly what those uses would be.
With, without getting too far into the, the discussion, if we can hold board questions for a little while. Matt, do you have any comments as, in your capacity as our engineer?
Um, no, I thought, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the applicant did a great job of summarizing the presentation, was spot on. A lot of the permits are already in hand, the other ones are already applied for. The P U D agreement was something that we worked on, and I did, I'm glad the applicant acknowledged, but I've been working with the road commission on a potential crossing there that the applicant had talked about. And in fact, you know, that wasn't a desirable location because there's no signal and the road commission prefers people crossing Jackson at a signalized intersection similar to like Parkland Plaza. So I'm glad to see that they kind of shifted that into the form of bus pads. I know that's something that I talked to Anna Kohn about, and she was in favor of, and something that the TAP Committee has been looking to improve up and down Jackson, so I think that fits really well. Overall, the, the site's designed, I think, very well, stormwater management is done very well. So overall, you know, the applicant's been pretty, pretty good to deal with along the whole, whole journey, I know it's been long for him, but I think it really turned out to be a nice, nice P U D example. So that's all I have.
Great.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Well, with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing, allow members of the public an opportunity to speak. And so I guess if you guys could consolidate, or, or maybe just step back for, to allow members of the public a space to come forward and use. Just as we do with public comments, we would first turn to members of the public who are present here, and then we will turn to those who would like to speak, who are participating remotely. During public hearing, we allow up to five minutes for comments from members of the public. And so with that, it's now eight forty nine. I'd like to call a public hearing to order. And are there any members of the public present who would like to speak on this subject? Please come on up. And if you, if you could introduce yourself.
I'm Kathy Juskovic, SIO resident, and I'm a member of the Sustainability Task Force. And this is a complex project, it looks pretty good to me, but you have a lot to look at and a lot to think about. But I'm here specifically to talk about the importance of E V infrastructure, E V charging infrastructure, because this has twelve level three chargers attached to it. I just want to point out that our proposed climate action plan, that's being considered SIO right now, has as a goal to increase the use of E Vs and plug-in electric hybrids. Washtenaw's Climate Action Plan has the goal of increasing the share of vehicle miles traveled with electric mobility options by ten percent annually. Michigan Future Mobility Plan, by two thousand and thirty, deploy one hundred thousand E V chargers to support two million. Michigan Future Mobility Plan, by 2030, deploy 100,000 EV chargers to support 2 million EVs. Lead the nation EV friendliness through responsive policies. And by 2050, reach carbon neutrality, including a worry-free statewide EV charging network before 2030. The Biden administration has announced a goal of 500,000 chargers by 2030. And as best as I can find from researching, as of January, there were 28,250, wants to get up to 500,000 by 2030, seven years. They say they're critical to driver confidence and longer distance travel. It's predicted that EVs will be at 50% of new car sales by 2030. I-94 is on Michigan's Charge Up Michigan Programs, EV Charger Placement Program to build out fast charging station infrastructure to ensure the feasibility of all long-distance trips for EV users. And this proposed site is one mile from the highway exit, making it an ideal stopover for I-94 travelers. I read in the news about all these problems in California and New York with lines at the chargers because there's not enough chargers for the cars because they didn't build the infrastructure out in advance. And I just think we should have that in mind as we move forward. So I just wanted to make you aware of this. Thank you.
Are there other members of the public present here in the hall who would like to speak during the public hearing? Seeing none, are there members of the public participating remotely who would like to speak during the public hearing?
Yes, first off is Jan Culverson. Go ahead, Jan.
Thank you very much. I, I just want to kind of preface this with, I spent the afternoon this today with Senator Schenk and some of her staff. And we were working on codifying the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan. And part of this was Senate Bill 274, which sets zero net carbon goals for new buildings by 2027. And in addition, we were talking about the new energy code that is making its way through administrative approval in Lara. And within that code is a zero code appendix, which, which would require new buildings to be zero net carbon. And what I want to say is from the very start, Lithia has been wonderful at being responsive to environmental issues. And they have voluntarily put forward very aggressive energy targets. They are designing their buildings to exceed the new proposed energy code. They have not only set those net zero net carbon targets, but are taking responsibility through accounting for them with an annual report to the township. This goes, this is the very first development that has been so responsive to our resolution to achieve carbon neutrality in CIO Township. And I just want to make sure people appreciate the effort that has been made. I mean, they had to go back and, and to some of the standard designs that were put forth by the car manufacturers and challenge those a little bit to meet those energy targets. So thank you very much. Thank you also, Kathy. You did a great job explaining the importance of EV infrastructure. And I would like to say, just with the development agreement and, you know, the, you know, bus shelters versus crosswalk and so forth. I would like to broaden that a little bit and just to, to say it would be a contribution to multimodal improvements along Jackson Road. So hopefully at some point, we might be able to convince the road commission that, you know, a crosswalk, when you have bus shelters, you take a bus both ways. And you have to cross Jackson Road at a point if you're going to use the bus. And going a mile or two miles to cross Jackson Road isn't pedestrian friendly and it doesn't make, make, you know, taking the bus any easier. So I would hope that we can work toward some of those improvements and maybe making that text and development agreement a little broader. Anyway, thank you so much. And I really appreciate all that Lithia has done to improve sustainability and really set a higher standard for developments in CIO. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Next up is Rob Pattinson. Go ahead, Rob.
The first illustration tonight, the illustration showed four buildings, the three dealerships plus the outlaw building. So my question is to the developer, are they planning on building that fourth building as part of this project? Or are they going to leave that outlaw section completely undeveloped until they get a tenant for that particular parcel? And then also the $5,000 towards the fire department, I think needs a vast improvement. These are the types of buildings that would need the extension ability of a ladder truck to get to the center of the roof. Because they're too tall for our, the ladders that we have now. And with a ladder truck, we could get to the center of that building to put out a fire on the roof. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Pam Boyd. Go ahead, Pam.
Thank you, Pam Boyd, a CIO resident. As someone who watches all the planning commission meetings, I, I do want to echo a lot of Jan's comments that Lithia has, has really jumped through a lot of hoops. And I'd like to also echo a bit on what Rob just said on our fire department. And as you heard my earlier fire department discussion, our fire department needs infrastructure. It needs more employees. It needs another building. That the training on the electrical fires is kind of putting the cart before the horse. We, we actually really need more equipment to be able to fight fires better. And so I would ask that Lithia change that to, to, to help with our firefighters infrastructure. Thank you.
Jonathan, you first. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Yeah, I just wanted to also echo those feelings. $5,000 doesn't seem like much. I think that should be multiplied by a number that has zeros after. I think the best thing probably would be for, for them to work with chiefhood to identify where best and what best to, to ask for, because clearly there is more than just learning how to fight these electrical fires. There's going to be new equipment, new, new supplies and support training. So yeah, it seems like 5,000 is a bit low, but yeah, welcome to the neighborhood. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Jan. Anybody else want to speak in public comment?
Nobody's changed their mind here, so yeah, we can, we can move to close the public hearing. Some move by Reiser, support by Noel. I guess take a voice vote. All those in favor of closing the public hearing at eight fifty-nine, say aye. Those opposed. All right, the public hearing is closed. Now it's an opportunity for some discussion. And if there are questions from members of the board for the applicant team and or our consultants, this would be a good time to do that. Shall we go around?
Yeah, let's go around.
All right, do we, why don't we start with John?
I'm going to defer. I was part of the planning commission. I was one who voted yes on this. Appreciate you working with our council on finalizing the agreement. I know there could be some tweaks, but you know, project, even though we're not going to be taking action on it tonight.
Thank you, trustee here.
Yes, um, yeah, thank you for this. I was really excited about your proposal and you've done an excellent job. Would you mind coaching other developers? With that said, I have some questions though. The West Del High, I've read different things. There's a report from the road commission that they're not, they're going to vacate West Del High. Is, is that true? Are you taking that over with?
So what happened with West Del High, we approached the road commission originally to vacate the road. And one of the property owners on the road had an objection to it. So we actually went parallel paths with the road commission. So we, we kept the vacation petition active. While we also sought petition to actually improve it as a public road. A week ago, they approved as a public road and the vacation position has now been extinguished. So there's nothing, we're not vacating anything. It's going to remain a public, public entity.
So the road commission will be continuing their maintenance.
Well, they're responsible for maintenance, but I suspect that Lithia will be taking care of it as a part of their development, helping the road commission out a little bit.
Okay.
Well, this, that's why I was asking.
Didn't abandon it. Well, we had a neighboring, a buddy neighbor who opposed the abandonment. And so we worked with the road commission and we are going to do a road improvement. So as part of the development, we'll pay for the improvements on Del High Road. It will become a paved road. And so we submitted our plans to the road commission last Friday, Jason. So they're reviewing the plans now. So that's what's happened with Del High Road. So it'll become a paved road. We, the developer, will pay for the improvements and then we'll work with township on the road improvement agreement on the maintenance piece of it. Okay. Go ahead. Yes, there were, there was some confusion there because it was back, but that's really, that's good to know. Just didn't want it to go without anything. Let's see. Yeah, regarding the community benefit for the fire department and we've been, you may not know this, but we're in the process of, in November, we're going to have, have the fire department special assessment on the on the ballot. And working with the developers and, and I don't know how, who comes up with the public or the community benefits, but we need to get clear on this. And I would, you know, I'm really, our infrastructure should be first before the, the trees and, you know, all the fun stuff. So would you be willing to consider a different community benefit regarding the fire department? I have talked with chiefhood and regarding the training and they already have training for EVs. They've already actually put out a few of them along 94 and there was a lithium or a lithium battery. They had, Chiefhood has a personal experience with a lithium battery fire. So if that's, I don't know who would be discussing, would it be Doug or Joyce or? Our attorney? Yeah.
So the, the process at this point is the township attorney is working with the developer and their attorney on the development agreement. In a part of the development agreement is the community benefits. But this is an opportunity right now for the board of trustees to speak up as you're, as you're doing about what we would like to see. That's what they specifically, the applicant has asked to hear from us about.
And then I was asking about the process of how.
What happens next?
Happen. Yeah. Yes. Well, with that said, so, and then it, the, the third building or the third, let's see, that where you said Jaguar. That's going to be similar to the other two buildings. There is, there's something that.
Designed in the same manner, but what the manufacturers tell us what the buildings are going to look like. So Jaguar Land Rover tells us what they want as far as the building goes. And they have been working on their design package for two years. They're supposed to release it at the end of the year, but we're just waiting for it. Once that gets released, we'll go into the design process for the building. But until we have that information, it's like throwing money away to start designing something that we don't know what they want it to be. So we'll use our same design principles that we used when we developed Mercedes-Benz and BMW as far as the all-electric and, and the infrastructure of the buildings. We have to wait for Jaguar Land Rover to tell us what they want that building to look like. And it's down to all of the materiality, both inside and outside the building.
Rubber base that goes around the carpet. They tell us what color.
Proportions and sizes. I mean, they really.
And the, the parcel, the multi-use parcel, I'm looking at this, it's on page two. So that would be over here.
It would be at the far west end of the property.
And you have, you said a daycare and what's the sports? Here's this.
If I may, I'm, excuse me, Ron Goldstone with AI Goldman. I'm an executive vice president with the firm and I've been working with Lithia even prior to Lithia with the suburban collection, when it's owned by the Fishers and now happily with the, with the automotive group. Understand, and I know there's a feeling of cat and mouse, so to speak. A 20 acre tract of land is massive. And it's very hard to get somebody to get engaged on an outlaw around an 18, 19 acre field. And sadly, there's many cases where companies said, hey, this is what we're doing. Come join our project. And this piece never happens and the business fails. So once their group gets engaged, I've, I've been doing this for 37 years. I'm bullishly confident I will have no problem finding a nice mixed use complement. We've had even more recent discussions with a restaurant group that we really can't disclose yet. And there's also been some real low level talk with a boutique type hotel. But we're confident, bullishly confident, once we get that critical mass evolving and you've got this state of the art, cutting edge, leading technology, energy neutral project here that's going to get a lot of press and a lot of coverage. We'll be very easily able to, you know, get that right mixed use. And I know one of the people had asked if we're building that fourth building. We're not. It's going to stay as vacant land, not knowing who the end user is going to be.
Okay, great. Thank you. And did I hear correctly, I sat in, you probably saw me at a couple of the planning commission meetings. This is the first dealership that is state of the art in the United States that you have.
As far as the Lithia group goes, yes, this is our first all-electric development.
It's really exciting for, and they have it here inside of. Yeah, I'm excited about this. I really, I was really impressed with the whole thing. Yeah. So thank you.
Joyce, do you want to ask any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I'm just enjoying the conversation. It's good. I like it. I'm good.
All right, Jessica.
Sure, I just had a question. It might be more for our attorney. I'm not sure. But regarding the road improvement agreement, my understanding is that the parties in those, it would be the road commission and the developer.
Is that for Del High?
Yes. Yeah, they, they referenced, referenced that. I, and I, you know, I'm just thinking about prior development agreements where these road improvement agreements are referenced, but the township is not party to it. Is that always the case or is that something that's open here that the township might be party to this?
I doubt that the township would be party to it. I honestly haven't seen it yet.
Okay. And I, and I, yeah, go ahead.
So just so you know, as one of the requirements from the road commission, we will hold a public hearing with the road commission for this road improvement agreement.
That's great.
So once they approve our, our, the plan for the road development, we'll then have a public hearing.
Okay. And I, and I'm, what I'm drawing from is an experience we've had with a prior road improvement agreement that we inherited. And this is a totally different development. I just don't want to repeat this mistake and make sure that the township's interests are fully covered in that road improvement agreement. So for example, it was, it was the Trailwoods, Honey Creek, the road improvement agreement that said, I am paraphrasing, something along the lines of. that said, I am paraphrasing, something along the lines of, you know, the developer shall do this and the road commission shall do that. And the rest shall be subsidized through a township SAD, um, township-initiated SAD, which was not practical. Probable and still hasn't happened, we were not party to that, our development agreement referenced that agreement. I thought the agreement put the township in a rather, it set up expectations for people regarding the township, but we had, it was impractical to implement. So when I heard the presentation here state that we would approve the development agreement before the road improvement um, agreement was done, and I don't know if we would do that or not, but I just wanted to make sure that the township's interests are, are fully represented there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our attorney is here, she can probably speak to it much better than I can.
Tyler Tennant, I'm attorney for Lithia, I just wanna let you know that as of last week, the road improvement agreement has been executed by the road commission and by Lithia, but it is subject to approval of the final plans, the engineering plans. That agreement has nothing in it about any SAD, it has nothing about any township responsibilities. It's an agreement solely between Lithia and the road commission.
So our attorney hasn't seen it, where was the public hearing supposed to?
There's gonna be an informational hearing after a couple more steps we have to go through, including the approval of the plans. We'd actually like to have it here, if we can, be an informational hearing, we'd give notice to the township, obviously, and to the two property owners. An informational hearing about the plans, that's what's, that's what the town, the road commission requires.
And there was a hearing with the road commission on July?
July seventeen, yeah.
Okay, well, I look forward to our township attorney's comments once she's received it and had a chance to review it.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that we don't own that road, it's owned by the road commission, so this probably is gonna be very key in all of this negotiation. We have.
I would hope so.
We just don't.
Just to echo those comments, especially yours, is that there is nothing placed on the township for this, you're not gonna give them that.
So generally, in the, who, who's responsible for maintenance? Who is?
We are.
You are, ongoing?
So you will send me that?
I'm gonna do it in thirty seconds.
And then I, I had another question, and it's, it's either for the developer or offline for either Kath- Kathy or Jan. The million-dollar EV park, um, it's, I think that the EV infrastructure is um, critical. I trust that the hours are right and it'll be all, you know, people will probably be stopping here, right? To, to charge is the idea. Um, I'm, I'm curious about how the township, if and how the township is benefiting from any of the, you know, federal and state incentives available right now to build this EV infrastructure. And so I don't know if that's a, a, a financial benefit that's available to the developer to put those in. Or if it's, you know, if, if we're at all being passed on the benefit of that. Is that something the developer could speak to, the million dollars, is there, you know, federal subsidies, incentives built into that?
Into that million dollars, right now, we haven't applied for any of those type of subsidies yet. That is strictly just the, the cost, our cost to put the park in.
Okay, and do you expect there'll be some subsidies available?
No, it, it, again, it, it changes a lot.
Okay.
Um, and in certain cases, like there were some subsidies from DTE, but most of those credits are gone for right now.
Sure, the EBIT flow of the operating.
The EBIT and even of it.
Capital, there's not.
Pardon?
The, the, the capital, the, the infrastructure that you're putting in, there's not a federal subsidy for that, okay.
It's all, it's all private, this park is privately funded from Lithia.
Great, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Jessica.
Okay, um, thank you for your presentation, I thought it was excellent, I'm impressed. I have a few questions, I do want the completed negotiated development agreement to be given to us before our next meeting when we may be voting on this. Because it's some of the terms of the development agreement will yet to be finalized. And I wanna be sure we have ample time to review it, study it, ask our attorney questions about it. Um, so I would ask that we have it maybe a week before the scheduled meet, meeting when we're gonna take a vote on this.
At least.
At least, yeah. Um, I would echo the other comments about the fire station and ask that you consider more of a donation to the fire station. Talk to Chief Hood, see where his needs are right now. I don't know, but I know there are many, and I know the ladder truck is one of them. And, you know, a sizable contribution to the ladder truck could be very positive, I think. Um, I did have some questions about West Delhi, I noticed in the OHM report they referenced the fact that easements will be required to be signed and recorded prior to township board of trustees approval, is that still the prac- the plan or?
That was if the road was gonna be vacated, we had to execute agreements for access from the properties to us, so that's on the table, it's a public road now.
So what has to happen now will be the public hearing. How many homes are currently impacted, how many homes are at risk of high?
One single business that has access, direct access onto Delhi, and then there's a, another business in the back that uses it for like maintaining their detention base. But there's no activity back there.
Okay. Um, and then I had a question about you referenced the consideration of sports place, could you talk more about that?
Yeah, I don't. Um, it's, it was one of maybe a half a dozen different groups we've had preliminary dialogue with. Um, what a, you know, as I mentioned earlier, um, there was a childcare that expressed strong interest. Um, there was a restaurant group that expressed interest, there was a restaurant group combined with like a boutique-type hotel. There was a sports like, um, you know, called a mini Joe Dumars-type sports project that had expressed interest. It's all in the early discussion stages and, you know, again, it's kinda like when this starts going, that will get solidified.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Justee Brazil.
Okay, so, you know, you, you mentioned, you know, five thousand dollars for battery fires and, you know, right now, it's lithium-based batteries, that's gonna, I think, I've been reading that. I'm, I just, just put an order in electric cars, so I've been paying attention to battery technology. As you know, they're going to either silicon, there's now batteries that are gonna be made out of lobster crustacean material, totally biodegradable, true.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, mixed with um, zinc, will make batteries that'll be completely biodegradable within five months.
Bad for lobsters though.
Yeah, bad for lobsters, all those, imagine all those crustacean shells that get thrown away can now be, cannot be leveraged. So, so I think to, to kinda Pam Boyd's point, getting, getting trained on one thing is gonna quickly, this, this, as you know, this tech is evolving, by the way, Lithia, like, like the name. Uh, it's going to just evolve, evolve quickly, so we certainly have to let the, the fire department decide, five thousand dollars, I'm gonna be a little more strong about this. I, I think we gotta kinda more than just politely ask, I think we're gonna kinda demand, we, we gotta go higher, we gotta bump that up. Five thousand dollars is awful weight for the, for the fire department to do much of anything. Uh, you know, that's gonna have at least, I think, another zero on it, uh, for it to be, for it to be meaningful. Secondly, on the park, you said it's level three, which is up to four hundred kilowatt-hours, I believe, are you guys gonna? And the reason I ask if you're gonna do the maximum, because again, this technology is changing quickly. Toyota just announced a battery that's gonna go nine hundred miles, uh, and it's gonna have, uh, be charged in ten minutes. It's gonna require level three at four hundred kilowatts to even begin to make that a reality. So if you're gonna get, cause level three can be done, I think it's done at fifty kilowatts. It, it's not gonna be a useful park, it'll be quickly updated as a level one or level two, if you guys come in with a level three station and only really is at the, at the minimum. So I would ask, if you're gonna do a, a level three, uh, charging system that's, it, that's at the four hundred kilowatt level, at least whatever the maximum is by today's standards. That would be.
So the charges we're putting in are the state-of-the-art chargers from ChargePoint. And they're actually gonna have a battery backup system to them. And we've spoken with ChargePoint at nauseam about the change in technology. And they are confident that this charger is going to be able to take us into the next iterations of battery development.
Okay, that's great, so I guess, but my question, where, what's our starting point? Cause when you say level three, it can be anywhere from fifty kilowatt-hours to four hundred kilowatt-hours. So are we certain at fifty or are we certain at four hundred? I guess it'd be, it's always up to, so just because I have a station that goes to four hundred, doesn't mean our car can observe, but that's what latest technology cars can, can do. The car I, I've ordered can take a four hundred kilowatt charge. So that's, that'd be my ask.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get back to that.
Just to get back to that, I'm not asking for, don't even need the answer today. Um, so you've got a Mercedes-Benz dealership and a BMW dealership. What about, and I know you've talked about how the, how the corridor is looking like, and I'm not trying to be hard, I have, somebody's gotta be the bad guy here, I guess, right? Uh, I, we have two existing buildings, a BMW dealership today and a, and again, they're not exactly on the corridor, they're setback, that Mercedes-Benz dealership is quite a bit back and the BMW dealership is somewhat back, what is gonna happen to those buildings today? Are those gonna become an ice war, how are those gonna get repurposed and reused? My, my question, so I wanna get a better understanding of that. And then you mentioned the, uh, the mixed-use building, you've got some people, parties who are interested. That's great, those are good words, good to hear, but on the other hand, they're worse. So what's to say, we don't, we approve this project, and again, I'm just being the naysayer here, the group, that for whatever reason, feet, feet drag or whatever, and that, that building never comes to fruition. What is the incentive, is it a timeline, what's the incentive to make sure that becomes a reality, right?
Happy to speak?
That's a question.
We don't need, we don't need an answer to that, I'm just saying, and we'd want some kind of, rather than words, cause it's gonna be more words, to be, to be, I don't mean that in any offense. But I mean, in the sense of what contractually can we, can we hold someone to to make sure that actually becomes a reality?
Reputation?
That's why Chris voted no.
Yeah, I don't know if that's enough, I'm just gonna be, I'm just gonna be, you know, it, it, there's no, there's no contract, I, I, I negotiate contracts for my life all day long and nobody's ever done it, agreed to a deal on a reputation ever, and we have a, we have a.
I, I repurposed fifteen Mervens Californias, everyone in Michigan. I repurposed thirty K-marts in Michigan, Ohio, um, Knoxville, Tennessee. I've, uh, we, I've repurposed about a dozen toy sawroofs, baby sawroofs, um.
Well, that sounds like there should be no problems for you to contractually guarantee that this building gets up because you're so confident, I will just look at that, that's what I just heard.
Yeah, I mean, we're very confident we'll get it done, but the, the challenge we have here is a real challenge. You have a, a twenty-acre track, you know how large that is?
I heard.
And we're gonna, we're gonna put in a two-to-three-acre complement, non-automotive to a project.
I understand that too.
You know, I, I can talk till the cows come home, come locate here, this is what we're building. Until somebody sees it, they're not gonna invest millions of dollars in going vertical on a project to be a neighbor. You, you, it's a, it, it's a cumulative.
Well, I was gonna say, you're kinda encumbering us to take out somewhat of that risk, where, cause there's a, there's a benefit risk. We have to, they're saying to our residents, what's the benefit for sawtowers? Now, you can say there's some benefit of having commerce in sawtowers, agree a hundred percent, and we have good commerce, or what people, I'm, I'm all for commerce, right? I'm a businessman, I own a company, I got it, but benefit has to go beyond that, right, when we're, 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 development is pressing, in fact, that's one of your, your mainstays in your presentation. We're going to develop this mixed-use property, but with really no guarantee, other than you said, a promise that we're going to develop it, so what can we do contractually? And I'm not, so we gotta have the answer today, and I'm not saying you won't do that, I, I, I believe that you will, I'm not second-guessing your reputation, I don't mean it that way. But I can't put that to paper and say, well, the guy promised, you know, uh, we need something a little more concrete. So that, that, those would be my, my ask, would be, what about the existing buildings, what's gonna happen to those today, so those don't become eyesore. So now I just want some beautiful buildings, now I've, I've stuck with two eyesores. What about the incentives can we do for this, for this mixed-use, what contracts can we put in place? Make sure that this, this park doesn't quickly become basically outdated, cause this is tactical, can we make sure that we're at, at least starting at the four hundred kilowatt? Cause it's all about charging speed going forward, that's, that's gonna be the name of the game, game with the batteries coming. And lastly, but certainly not least, what can we do with the fire department? Five thousand dollars doesn't make it dent in much of anything at the fire department, so uh, everything's expensive, those guys own. So those are, those are my, my ask.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
I'd like to ask our township attorney too, if that's okay, if you can give kinda the status of kinda where we're at on this project.
Um, well, I liked the presentation also, um, but we have a lot of, a lot of documents to review while we've been sitting here. I've been looking at some of the most recent, there are gaps, I'm sure that I'll be talking to Mr. Tennant about some of those. Um, I have, I have a number of questions that I will send to him, so we still have a lot to take a look at.
A lot of work to do, okay, good, thank you.
Good question, do you own the buildings, or we, no?
No.
So that's like, you know, the, the Panera that we had and then they decided to build on Zeeb, so we have the owners of Panera, the old Panera that's looking for tenants, so it's not up to them to do anything with those buildings.
It's a, it's just, it's just a factor, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying this, is it gonna become our problem?
Just to be clear.
Yeah, no, these, these are questions for Doug, and it sounds like, yeah, cause there's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not looking, yeah, I'm not looking to solve that, I'm just posing out the challenges, and the answer might be nothing. At least that way, we brought everyone's attention, I brought to the board's attention, we said, there's nothing we can do about it, okay.
So Doug, Doug, are you still with us here? Can you, can you join in response to some of the questions?
Um, well, the, it, it sounds like one of the questions about the unknown nature of the outlaw in the future, you know, part that kinda makes this a mixed-use. Um, we could do a couple, the, the two examples I gave you before are probably good examples to, to kind of illustrate two different ways you can go about what could happen on those parcels when it's not real, when they don't have anybody, you know, don't have anyone yet to go. So a more controlled way of doing it would be similar to what we did on the Goodrich Theater site years ago. And that is, we had a list of uses that the township felt were acceptable, that could go onto that outlawed. And so we, 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 we didn't want just anything to go in front of the theater, so we had some very specific uh, uses that were contained in a PUD agreement uh, for those two buildings out from. Um, and, and we still didn't know when they would be developed, but at least there was some direction. And we knew some things that weren't going to happen there at some point. The other example is more open-ended, and that's what we did in front of the condo complex south of Myers with the two outlots there, those were simply zoned C2. And uh, basically, anything that's permitted in the C2 district could go there, which, uh, which was kind of an open-ended approach. So, you know, those are kinda two approaches that you could take, this being a PUD, you know, if there are some commercial-type uses that the community really doesn't wanna see there, uh, we certainly could act to limit those. But other than that, you know, requiring a, a business, you know, that, that becomes problematic just because they don't, you know, they don't have anyone yet. And of course, as we talked about before, that was the main concern of Planning Commissioner Chang with his, um, with his, uh, um, you know, no vote on the project.
Right.
So, um, I don't know, I, I hope that helps in some manner, but that, that, those are two kinda different ways that you could approach this.
A, a follow-up on that, Doug, and I really do take Commissioner Chang's position on this to heart, being a career planner himself. Um, but I'll also ask, why, what, what happened with Menards? Because this was something I remember former supervisor Jack Knowles, um, brought up and was trying to, with some of these developments, build in some incentives to provide us with some assurance about these outlets getting developed. And so that's where I'm a little, I'll, I'll call Commissioner Chang and, and find out a little bit more, but I'm a little surprised that the planning commission pushed this forward for three without some more assurance about this. But I'm a little surprised that the planning commission pushed this forward for three without some more assurance about this.
Well, Menards is a little different of a situation because that was properly zoned for the Menards. And that, that was not, it wasn't a, it wasn't a PUD. It wasn't a mixed, you considered a mixed-use project. So that, that's a Menards with some outlots that may or may not ever be developed. And, and we knew there were outlots, but I don't think back when Menards was built, we were, maybe Jack Knowles was, I forget if that's who you said, maybe they were trying to get it done, but I don't recall anyone ever having a desire to have those out, any of those outlots built. In fact, it's the same situation as the Myers site, you know, when Myers was built, that was properly zoned. There were open lots along Zeeb and along Jackson that have slowly started to fill in now faster now. But that would last three or four years. But, yeah, slightly different situation because those were actually uses that were permitted by the underlying zoning. So there was no, it wasn't a PUD, it wasn't special land use, so slightly different.
So we didn't have the tools available to us to incentivize the way that we do now with the PUD?
Yeah, it wasn't, it was not, it was not proposed as a PUD, so it's not that we didn't have the tools, but we weren't able to employ them. Because they didn't, they did not need to be, they did not need to be reviewed as a PUD. That was, that was just straight commercials only.
Thanks, Doug.
Joyce, did you have anything?
No.
Oh, with that, why don't we move on, on our agenda? I'm assuming that you have gotten the kind of feedback that you were hoping for.
I guess what we're looking for is, I, I heard you say you want this development agreement prior to voting. When is the next meeting?
And I wanted to note that, because I noted in your letter, you referenced August eighth as our next meeting, and I wanted to correct that. Our next board meetings, regular board meetings are August fifteenth and August twenty ninth. August eighth, it's, it's one of those months where we are off a Tuesday. So August eighth is a special public hearing we've called at six PM for the sole purpose of considering the fire special assessment. August fifteenth, August twenty ninth, seven PM are our next regular board meetings.
Okay. It, I apologize, when I looked at your website, it didn't show it as a special meeting.
No, 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 you don't need to apologize. I just wanted to make sure nobody was making plans for the wrong day.
So I guess my, my question is, is if you have a PUD agreement that your township attorney has reviewed on August eighth, that would be one week prior to the August fifteenth meeting. How do we arrange to get on that agenda?
I mean, we, I mean, I, I for one, I mean, we, we need to hear from our township attorney that it's ready.
And Doug.
And Doug, our planner.
And we, when you met with sort of a, a group of us, I guess, a, a couple of weeks ago, that's what we tried to emphasize, is that at this point in the process, it's the township attorney, it's the township manager, and it's our township planning consultant, who are gonna be sort of key people in terms of telling us when they feel all of the materials are ready for consideration by the board.
So I guess I'll rephrase my question. When, when will that be communicated to us if we turn in documents in a week? When will we hear from someone when we're ready to be put back on the agenda?
Our Joyce and Mariah.
Yeah, I think once you provide the information to our township attorney, you know, we will internally discuss everything and get back with you, but we'll work together to try to get everything wrapped up in order to put it back on about the board agenda.
So the answer's TBD. We just can't give you an definitive answer right now. I know you're looking for a hard answer. I, I understand where you're coming from, but we just can't give you a hard answer because there's dependencies. So until those dependencies are resolved, we can't give you a hard answer.
For example, like tonight, the township attorney indicated that she just received a document by email, so she didn't have an opportunity to review it or meet. So I think the key is really communication and getting that information to her in order for us to meet internally and make that assessment.
I, I will get my comments to Tyler as soon as I can. If, if your concern is coming back in person, I, I would think that the board would not be, you know, that you come from Oregon.
I know, no, it's not about me being here. It, we're trying to get the project moving. And so we're trying to get a shovel in the ground and we're trying to help you get there.
Okay. But you know, the master deed, I, I've been looking at the master deed and the bylaws, and there's a lot of like, this will be decided later, that'll be decided later. That, those, those documents need to be more complete. They're, they're, we, we're, I don't think that Doug, I think that Doug would agree with, with me that we're, we can't say that it's a full package if we've got all these empty spaces or questions still. But I'll, I'll send Tyler my comments. And Anne, I did notice you said what date we'd get back on the agenda. And so I didn't want to let, let that go unnoticed. And so I will just say, like, is this public hearing is on the agenda? There's, the, the next agenda isn't set. I don't know if there's been communication about what agenda it might be on action for, but if that, it, it sounds like that's, that's part of it. So again, it's communication with our manager and our attorney about that. Because certainly if there have been representations about which board meeting it would be ready for action, certainly nobody could have said that without complete documents approved by our attorney and planner.
Well, we'll get those documents, and it just needs, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Why don't we take, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Roughly. Why don't we, why don't we aim to, aim to start again at about a quarter to? All right, let's call a meeting back to order at nine forty-six. And I think we can move on now to unfinished business. First item is item J one. And this is the Township Wide Road Special Assessment District Unspent Funds Credit Resolution. And Joyce, can I turn to you to?
Well, primarily, you're, you're referring to the KBK item.
No, no, this is J one, this is, this, this one.
Okay, yeah, we.
I think this, yeah, this resolution. This resolution is related to the special assessment district reimbursement. And, and speaking with our clerk in accounting, there was an amount of one point six million dollars related to the reimbursement process. Our attorney, Mike Holmeyer, provided an opinion in reference to the process. And so based on his recommendation, in order to move forward, there's a need to have a resolution adopted by the board. The board did earlier approve it with a voice vote, but in the state act, there's a requirement for a resolution.
That's great, and, and the, the one point six number, so the fund is now inactive. There'll be no more interest in crew and no more, yeah, no more activity.
Correct, and yeah, it'll be interest accrued, it's invested. No, 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 as far as, so the amount that to.
No, we, yeah, go ahead.
Must be locked in.
Oh, I get you.
In order for Andrea to figure out.
Make the calculations.
Yeah, so there's one, one little change that we talked about, and we actually, it was really refreshing to work with Joyce and Jessica and Andrea and, and Mike Holmier as a collaborative to get this resolution together, felt really productive. I mean, we just kind of hashed it out after, you know, Mike. So there's one, but there is one little thing that we wanted to add, and this is the third, fourth, I'm sorry, fourth. Whereas right after the one point, or the one point, one million six hundred twenty-eight, we could add the date of the resolution, so that may, just to be clear that that is locked in.
Yeah, and that's just helpful for accounting purposes, because it'll be distributed on December first.
May resolution or tonight's resolution?
No, no, tonight.
Tonight.
The resolution that is, is passed, so it's.
So, so this is.
Why do we have to lock it in? We won't be doing anything with it until the December bill.
I think legal's recommending that we lock it in.
Okay.
So I think.
So, okay. That's not it, your, your clerk and your assessor are recommending we lock it in because in discussion with Manor Cisterison and Finance and Donna, we are planning to allocate the interest from, for, from, for June forward and all of that, the interest would just go to the general fund, just to have this fund frozen. Because Andrea needs this number to work with it, we need to take this action, and so we freeze. So Donna, Rebecca changed the interest allocation so that those amounts will go into the general fund.
So this is the pie to be divvied up to as of today.
Yes, and it's frozen.
So as of December first.
I, I could be returned.
This is getting very confusing, but just to be clear, trustee Carrie, about the point that you were making about modifying the language of the resolutions, that what you're proposing is that there would be after, in the, in the last whereas clause, after the figure amount equal to one million six hundred twenty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars twenty-three cents, it would say today's date.
As of July twenty-third, twenty-three, twenty. I got it.
Okay.
And then that would, yeah, because if we don't, then December will have a different amount, and then that would.
Right, you can't be, I get it, it can't be a moving target, or it's impossible for.
And we want to keep Andrea.
Yeah.
I would move the model motion.
Okay, as, as a modify.
Yeah, as amended.
Okay, so moved by Ryser, support?
I'll support.
Support by Noel. Unless there's further discussion, please call the roll.
Sure, Ryser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes?
Brazil?
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
A resolution as amended is adopted.
Now, I want a very clear official directive to my area about the way the interest is to be handled. I'm, I don't care if it's a board motion saying the interest will go to the general fund, because the money's invested, interest is being earned, so.
Sure, it, it, we can talk internally, but, but the direction is that the, the interest is booked in to the general fund.
Does it say that?
It doesn't, I don't think it needs to here.
I want a very clear directive, so we will discuss it, and I will get that directive.
Okay, I, I will just say it's, it's the revenue being booked, and, and so it's, it's not about what's receiveded, it's not about what's in the bank, it's not about the treasurer's area, it's about what's being, what revenue is being booked and where it's being booked. So it was a, I thought, pretty straightforward thing. We can talk more internally, but I don't think there's.
I think you're, you don't agree with your own opinion that way.
Do you need a motion, is that what you're?
No, we'll discuss it, we'll see.
Why don't we have some internal discussions, as the clerk was suggesting. I think it's, we just be the, the treasurer was not included in some of the discussions leading up to this.
About accounting.
And, 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 and so we can have those discussions, and maybe that will solve the problem.
Yeah, we had the, the meeting with Mike last Friday, when I think he were, he was on vacation. On vacation, yeah. Yeah, but. But we wanted to get this, this, this Andrea's waiting for us to do the resolution for her to work on it.
I, I think there's a way forward, it may or may not involve further board action.
Okay.
So if we can move on, the next item is, under unfinished business is G two, the KBK contract for landscaping of the Jackson Road median. And trustee Carrie, you asked to move this from a consent agenda, so perhaps you would like to
Well, the reason why.
With your questions.
Yes, thank you. The reason why I wanted this pulled is not so, well, sat in on the DDA meeting, Zoom, and the, the DDA is looking to do something different with the, the medians, and they've already started, if you notice, there's some lilies that they had planted. There is an experiment on some of these islands. Ryan, why don't you come up, because you're, you're on the DDA. And then also the planning commission is, they're talking about doing something different with the medians. And here again is another example of, we have these different committees doing different things and have different ideas. So the KBK, are they going to be maintaining what these, these different ideas? Are they going to do the work? And we're gonna pay forty-three thousand dollars a year for them. Do they really know what, what they're gonna do? Or what, because we have these different committees with different ideas, and this is gonna unfold into something.
It's, I, I can address this, I think, and Ryan, maybe you can.
That's right.
You can jump in.
Or the DDA too.
Yeah, so, and I also, I worked with Utilities Director Steve Legowski to, to pull this together. He agreed to do it, it was in response to an issue actually raised by our finance manager, Rebecca Modi. And so what this really is, is sort of, here's, we have a situation right now with KBK carrying out landscaping on behalf of the township. They have invoices pending that we cannot pay unless we make, unless we take this action because of the limitations on funds. So this essentially gives some flexibility for use of budgeted funds.
Like a change order, really.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's a good way of thinking of it.
To twenty-twenty-fives?
Well, the, the contract itself is another issue. And, and the future of KBK, you know, working and doing this work going forward is another question. But this is really, this action is really meant to solve a problem so that we can pay a pending invoice that's already overdue for, for work that they've already done at the, the hest of the township.
Okay, so I didn't really read that in here, I was reading more of, we're renewing a contract with, so, and again.
No, it's not.
It's not, okay, because twenty-twenty-five.
Well, I know the contract itself, and I, I made sure that Steve got that and that we attached that because I know that sometimes there are questions when we reference a contract. People want to see the contract as being referenced. But the, the thing to bear in mind is that the problem that we're trying to solve with this action is an immediate problem. The long-term issues that you're, you're mentioning, trustee Carrie, with the DDA and the plans for landscaping and the, who pays, whether it's the DDA or the township proper?
Should be the DDA.
Yeah, I know, that's just a larger issue that we'll be talking about more in the future.
Yeah, and that's what my concern was, is to lock us into a, a contract with this company, and we don't know what we're gonna do, except pay for them to do whatever.
And I just have to say, I, I just want to make it as clear as possible. I'm asking the DDA to begin paying for this. I don't know what more we can do other than ask the DDA to pay for this. But I'm, I'm not supportive of the DDA investing more money in improvements and signs and all these things when the DDA hasn't yet said we're paying for the maintenance of all these new shiny things.
There was, and Will can probably also comment to this. There was discussion at our last meeting that it was determined after a long-held belief that the DDA could not pay for maintenance whatsoever, that it is now a possibility after re-reviewing.
Very possible.
The, the charge, and I think there's now more openness to it. I think it definitely needs to be discussed again. There was discussion about how the current funding for the Jackson Road maintenance is coming out of a fund that has only so many years of funding left for it.
Yeah, and certainly we could use it for other things, because it's not dedicating to that.
Correct, yeah, so I think there definitely is an interest in it, and I definitely think, hopefully, I'll talk to Bob to make sure it's on the agenda next time. That way we can discuss it again and hopefully take some action.
Thank you.
One of, one of the things we've been trying, after the landscape issue was brought up for, for four or five meetings, we're trying to understand issues, but also hopefully take action on issues, whether it's yay or nay, because just moving forward is key and.
I'd be happy to draft a motion for the DDA, if you can, but.
And at August tenth, maybe we could discuss that, that. And at August tenth, maybe we could discuss that, that.
It seems like a good topic to bring up in that context. Um, all right, well, if, if that satisfies your question, um, if, but then could, uh, someone make the model motion to allow the repurposing of funds within public improvement fund four-four-five dash zero-zero-zero dash nine-three-two as needed to meet varying needs within the scope of the Jackson Road Boulevard Maintenance and Service Contract?
I would so move.
Moved by Riser?
I'll support.
Support by Carrie, um, please call the roll.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Brizo? Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
All right, that brings us to new business. The first item, K one, is Sire Ridge and Upland Drive pedestrian safety, construction contract. Um, now, um, I'm sure you've all read the material and you understand, but basically, uh, we went through a bidding process, we had one bidder.
Is Anna online?
I don't think so. Well, we have Joe here.
I know, I know. Okay, okay, I'm just asking.
Um, so, um, oh, when, so we had the one bidder that came in kind of high, there were some questions, uh, we met, uh, some of us with the contractor, Joe, uh, was very helpful in pulling together materials, uh, that the contractor needed in order to, uh, talk with subcontractors and they came back, the contractor, with a reduction, um, a significant reduction in their bid. Uh, so what you see in front of you is the revised quote with built into it, uh, the contingency recommended by our construction manager, uh, in this case, uh, Washington Engineering. So if there are other questions or comments, um, do we want to go around?
I would at least move, could I move the model motion to get it on the floor?
Sure. Do you want to read, do you want to read the model motion so that we have?
I would move the Sire Township Board of Trustees accept the attached updated bid from the Fontaine Company, Inc. And to authorize the, the expenditure of up to three hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents from those ARPA funds authorized in the May ninth, twenty-twenty-three board motion. And to further authorize the supervisor and the clerk to sign an agreement for construction of the proposed Sire Ridge Upland Drive pedestrian safety improvements, once the contract is reviewed and approved by the township attorney.
That's moved by Riser, support by Noel. Um, further discussion.
Sure, I have, uh, two friendly amendments. Um, the first, um, would be to insert after five-nine-twenty-three board motion to insert out of one-on-one-four-four-six, which is our roads component, so it will be funded with ARPA funding, but will be coming through our general fund.
So I say that again, out of.
Out of one-on-one-dash-four-four-six.
Fund one-on-one.
Sure.
Yes.
That's friendly.
Okay, um, and then the, um, I just want to make a comment about the ARPA funds. Um, again, uh, we, we desperately need, um, finance director and full finance team. In the absence of that, um, I have done my best to read through all of the requirements for ARPA. Um, given our particular situation, I think this is gonna be cool. You know, and the auditor thus far thinks so, um, but there are subaward, you know, contracting requirements, subaward agreement requirements, things that are typically applied to federal funds. I think we're okay because we're claiming this under a particular category of it. So I just want to let you know I've done what due diligence I can. I wish it were a hundred percent, I'm ninety percent. Um, and, and this is true and that's why I reached out to Joe to just see if there may be additional, suddenly, I just don't want to be in a situation where eighteen months from now, we're scrambling for records, um, that we don't have, so. It's just an unusual situation of one bid, um, for the federal money, so that's what I wanted to make sure was kosher particularly because we didn't go through a particularly formal bidding process.
And we can cover that during discussion. Two, with the one bid, because we solicited, we went through a very formal, we followed our ordinance, we solicited nineteen companies. I mean, we reached out to nineteen different, I, I don't know, I don't want to speak for you, Joe.
Sure, no, that's fine. I'm just saying, I think the ARPA funding is gonna be okay. I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody's work, I'm just saying typically there's a, a different standard. I think we're gonna be okay. Should be safe.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, I would just want the record to reflect and our deliberation to reflect that, uh, the engineer, um, he reached out to, was it nineteen companies?
Yeah. Yeah.
And we also posted it on our website, we published it as our ordinance requires us to do, so we tried.
I, I know, we're definitely in compliance with our policy.
About that, about that.
Yep.
And good pra, and good practices to reach out to nineteen, uh, firms.
Yes, that's more than reasonable, man, it's, go above, beyond nineteen's a lot.
Hopefully the feds will agree.
Well, I, I sense there's support in, you know, for the project, it's not a question about, uh, whether we want to move forward with that. Are there any other questions before we, uh, call the roll? Any questions about next steps?
Yeah, I just wanted to have some clarity. I know Mariah was working on something, John was working on something, but I wanted to have some clarity, I'm supportive of this. I just don't want to be in a situation where we've been in before where we fund sidewalks and then there's questions about maintenance. And so I, I just want to say, um, the township doesn't have the capacity, is not designed for going around the township and maintaining little stretches of sidewalk. So I want to make really clear so that we're managing everybody's expectations. I don't know if it's gonna fall on the HOAs or whatever, um, is privately decided, but I want to make clear, um, somehow that the township will not be responsible for the maintenance.
Is there?
Well, Mariah?
Mariah?
Yes, that, that is, uh, John is holding up something, that, that's what the sidewalk ordinance says. The sidewalk ordinance says that adjacent property owners are responsible for maintaining the sidewalk. But to your point, I think it's, I think that education is part of what we need to, to work on. So when a new stretch of sidewalk goes in and the responsibility lands on the owner, they need to know that, right? They, they need to be made aware that that's what's happening. I believe that that happened in this case. Um, trustee Riser has had a conversation with the HOA, at least, at least one of them.
That was all for.
The adjacent property owners.
Oh, good.
Yeah, and, and they're, they're aware and they seem to have agreed that, 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 that they understand that responsibility. And, but I, but I do, I do think it's important to start saying to people when we're putting in new sidewalks, hey, we're doing this lovely thing for you and we're expecting that you're going to maintain it under our ordinance.
Right, especially because it's, it's partly under as a pathway and we do maintain some of our pathways, right? But not sidewalks, so I want us to all get clear.
I think it's also confusing when you're, you know, when the money is coming from a different source.
Yes.
That, but, but the ordinance is pretty clear.
Are we maintaining the border-to-border trail in the winter?
The border-to-border?
I'm sorry, Zebra Parkway, excuse me.
That's a question for Anna, I know she was developing.
I thought we were doing some maintenance and I, I thought we were doing some Mon Parkland Plaza too.
Didn't we stop that?
I, I don't know what the status is of that, the, the, these are good questions, um, but there are sort of off on a tangent from, from this particular project.
Well, it's the gray area I don't want to get into, yeah.
Well, okay, if it's part of the discussion.
It is, it is.
That we must have.
It is.
And I want to say with the sidewalk ordinance, we have never enforced our sidewalk ordinance. I just want to be clear on that.
City, whoever does, man.
Well.
Well, that's different than the experience, right?
It's not, it's not entirely true. Um, I've been involved with Doug in trying to enforce it in some situations and some subdivisions where.
Really?
Yeah, um, where HOAs, HOAs were unwilling to sort of work with us and so there, it's difficult. I think, uh, my sense is that, um, you know, John has taken initiative, he's talked with HOAs, you probably know them as well, I think, in the same neighborhood. And I think, you know, some HOAs, some neighborhoods are better about dealing with these sort of common areas than others. Um, and so it's, it's, you know, there's, uh, negotiation in order to try and get people to comply sometimes. But we, have we gone around and given out tickets for people? No, I don't think we've done that.
So in our neighborhood, I would say seventy percent of the people shovel their sidewalks in the winter, the rest don't. Those of us who have dogs tend to shovel the sidewalks, um, and there's nothing we can do, really.
So the bigger answer is it's all about this, for this organs officer that we've talked about getting forcing sidewalks, that's. That's what you're, and it kind of go, kind of relates back to your question, so. All good discussion, not gonna solve it here, but definitely something to solve, we'll say that ordinance.
Into Mariah's point, education, it's a really good thing. We've got a newsletter and we need, I think the next newsletter should have an article about the obligation under chapter twenty-eight, street sidewalks and other public places that the owner of all lots, parcels and premises within the township are required to maintain, repair and keep safe all sidewalks adjacent to or upon their property and premises in or along the public streets or in the township. These are going onto public streets. Further on in that ordinance, it says whenever any snow shall fall or drift across the sidewalk, the owner occupant of the land, building or premises adjacent to abutting the sidewalk has to take care of it. So, so it, it's clear that it rests on the, on the property owners that are, it's on or adjacent there to, we're aware of it, we've talked about it. And, 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 uh, we've got to do a better job to let people know. In, in my day job, I, and for this, in, in another municipality, this is something that we take serious and that gets, there's written notices, there's notice of violations, there's a whole process for it, there's, 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 uh, tickets. If, if they don't do it, then the, the municipality can do it and charge it to the property owner, so other municipalities, uh, uh, address sidewalk. As one of the callers noted, there are thousands of people who live down there and walk on these streets. I'm telling you, these residents don't want their kids to, to have to continue to walk in snowy roads, uh, to get to the bus stop, so, so we've got a dog in the fight. I probably can't use that metaphor nowadays.
But right now, all the recourse is if you don't, right now, John, the only recourse is if you don't do it, we're gonna get, you're gonna get scolded. I mean, that's all we really do, there's gotta be something stronger than that.
I just want us to not go out there and start shoveling it the way we did on Heartland Plaza, so it's good, education has started tonight.
Yeah, okay, let's go, move on.
Um, did we vote?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we gotta vote for you, that's right, yeah, I thought we did, we're all for it.
Did we vote?
No.
No.
So let's call the roll.
Okay. Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-o.
Okay, uh, that brings us to item K six, which we moved up.
Who said it again?
Case six is the Knights of Columbus.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Hi, Joe.
All right, thanks a lot. Bye, Joe.
By that even. All right, so Knights of Columbus, I don't see anyone here to present and I, is anyone raising their hand? Because usually we offer the applicant the opportunity to, but it, they may have decided based on the, um, model, model motion not to be.
They're not piping up, they're not here.
Yeah, so. All right, I just want to make sure we're not overlooking somebody. All right, so, um, I'm gonna turn to you then, um, Mr. Riser.
Did they know to be here? I, I'd rather not vote, I, I'm.
They definitely knew to be here that, that if they wanted to.
Who noticed them? Who let them know? Raise your hand if you let the developer know.
They asked, they asked to be on this agenda, they were told they were on this agenda.
You told them?
Yes.
I'm just confirming that they were told.
Yeah, Doug, Doug told them they were on this agenda.
Doug did.
Well, I'm sure the communications occurred, I don't have them in front of me right now.
Is Doug? No, no, no.
Yeah, that's, that's not good enough, Will, to say, I'm sure.
Doug, Doug, I'm pretty sure. Refresh our memories.
How's everybody doing? Yeah, I, I will have to look in my email correspondence, I know there was a lot of back and forth on this item about when they were going to be on or not be on. Uh, I, I don't, I don't want to say, uh,
Right.
definitively that they were notified, but I don't, it, it would be very odd if they were not notified, put it that way.
Could you find that right now?
I will, I will look in my emails as you are, uh, deliberating.
Because I believe it was just in the last week that it was decided this should be on this agenda, so.
Who made the decision that it was going on the agenda? Well, it's, what are you looking for?
Can we, can we kind of move?
They asked to be on this.
Can we pass this for a little bit while you look?
We, we could, we could move on to, uh, the next item.
How about this, what, can we just move it to the bottom? For now, since the public isn't waiting, okay.
Yeah, there's nobody here waiting, except, I know there's maybe people out there who are curious, like, uh, the public, members of the public who spoke earlier, but it's fine.
Okay, so we'll move K six to the, um, bottom of the agenda after K eight. That's cool with everybody? Okay, super.
Do we have a K eight?
Code enforcement officer.
Oh, but that's not at the end of new business, that's ahead of K two, so why don't we, it'll be after K five and.
Okay.
And K six, so that's K six. K seven is the contract with, uh, for the, uh, second fire station schematic.
Great. Um, I don't know if the chief is still on, um, you don't need to be chief if you aren't, um.
Said he was going to.
Okay, great.
Participate remotely.
I just had, if I could just, um, while he's getting on, I just wanted to offer, um, uh, uh, change to the model motion. Which would be, um, and I talked to the chief about this earlier today too, um, and I'll just make the model motion. Um, to award the contract for schematic design for fire station two to partners in architecture in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from fund two-zero-zero-nine-seven-five upon completion of review by the township attorney. And further to direct PIA that a goal of the township is to develop a zero net carbon building in accordance with resolution twenty-twenty-two eleven, period. That's the, um, site to our net zero. And it's just to direct PIA that a goal of the township is to develop it. We were educated by Jan Culberson about the importance of including that goal in this very initial stage of getting a schematic design.
We were also educated by Lithia, uh, I mean, that was, that was, it's a good segue, follow-up to the.
Yeah, yeah, I think that there was a learning curve.
I would support your motion.
So moved by Flintoff, support by Riser, um, further discussion. What, did you want to say anything?
I told you it was a budget to be around forty-five, that was awful close.
Well, and, and Joyce, did you want to say anything? It was, it was our manager and fire chief and I who were involved in the process. I thought was solid.
Yeah, we, we interviewed, um, each one of the firms, uh, did the research, I know that, uh, Chief Hood also checked references and, uh, was pleased with this particular, uh, firm, yeah. And, and they specialize in fire buildings, fire stations.
Really neat niche.
Yeah, that's their niche.
Yeah.
So the, the bids came in and closed envelopes and they were all that close.
Well, that means that we had a good, yeah, a good scope of work is what that shows.
Let's go.
All right.
So motion by Flintoff?
Yes, I said that. Motion by Flintoff, support by Riser, please call a roll.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes? Brizo? Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-o.
Okay, that brings us to the added item.
Code enforcement officer.
Right, and we had some discussion of it earlier, um, I'm not sure what the point is of having the additional item.
Joyce?
I think, um, just, you know, just based on what was submitted in the packet, uh, the question is one of, um, what type of strategy you want to use, whether you want to look at a, a part-time ordinance officer.
strategy you want to use, whether you want to look at a part-time ordinance officer or full-time. And in the um memo I provided information related to the cost either way. So I think it's a matter of just philosophy and where you wanna start with this process beforehand. Carlisle Wardman handled ordinance enforcement and it was primarily on a part-time basis. So I wanted to get feedback and authorization once a decision is made in terms of how we should proceed.
And to to support, um, you know, Joyce's direction, when I read her report, I saw, you know, she wanted to get moving with a job description with solicitation, I would just say, we have zero budget for code enforcement and we have no positions authorized for code enforcement. So um if we did wanna move ahead and keep up on schedule, I wanted to um you know, after we have this discussion, I have kind of a a draft motion that would allow those authorizations necessary to move the process forward.
I have some some, some uh I have some thoughts about this. I think we should start with a part-time ordinance officer not biting off more than we can chew. We, you know, I know Doug's listening and it's a little awkward, but uh Carlisle Wardman hasn't done a lot of ordinance enforcement for us kind of lately, and I don't think that's their forte. They're good on planning, but ordinance enforcement, I think, is a different animal. Uh, ordinance enforcement sometimes, maybe oftentimes, requires flexibility and schedule. You gotta go at night if the parties are at night or if the noise violations are at night or whatever is at night. You gotta have somebody. I also thinks it takes a different kind of mindset for someone to want to do ordinance enforcement. You know, in 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 my world, we hire someone who's retired from another municipality, either in their building department, their zoning department, their police department, or somebody who's used to doing investigations, who's not afraid to, you know, counsel someone about what they're doing wrong. And if that doesn't work, to give them a written notice of violation. If that doesn't work, here's your ticket. And then defend it in court through testimony, through Fink and Fink, and they've got great people that do these in other jurisdictions. So I think we should kind of start small with somebody qualified to do this work, willing to do this work. Um, I agree with Clerk Flintoff that we have to fund it. I don't know if all the money that's been set aside for Carlisle Wardman has been spent, or if we can use all the money that we saved on ordinance enforcement and allocate it towards this. I don't know that we need to talk about that tonight, but I think we should proceed with our own ordinance enforcement officer on a part-time basis, but that's my take on it.
I, I, I agree with you on the part-time. I will say, and I I shared this with Joyce. Um, the, the twenty four thousand is about what we've spent on Carlisle War- Port- Wardman ordinance enforcement. You know, Joyce used, um, that was not not budgeted, it's all rolled up and kind of hidden in planning. Um, but, but that, that is, um, you know, I, I think that I, if I had to guess, that's, that's kind of a less than a quarter time that they've, they've put into ordinance enforcement. So I definitely think a half-time um, part-time, permanent, our own person. Um, and that we have a job description. Thank you, Joyce. I would suggest that we have written in the job description twenty-four seven availability. Um, absolutely. We expect somebody to be available twenty-four seven, not every time, but if, if there's something and if we're gonna enforce a noise ordinance and we need somebody to stand out there with a decibel reader at one AM, that's the person who needs to do it.
You know, the way we handle that in our world is we we give them a stipend. So if you have to respond to something at night, if I have to put like a support person and they have to answer a call for Asia one o'clock in the morning.
I, we talked about how, how to kind of, so let me just share a little bit, like, what we talked about is is, you know, Rebecca and I looked at it and I I ran this idea by Joyce. If we wanted to do part-time, Joyce was recommending, and I think it's a good idea, it's a permanent part-time, so it would be hourly. But and the person would get pro-rated holiday and PTO pay, you know, the healthcare savings contribution of the three and a half percent. But then we set their schedule. So maybe their schedule's hourly up to X dollars. We don't have to pay the on-call stipend or premium as long as people understand that they're working a certain number of hours.
I, I will say this, if you're, if you got twenty-four seven, if you got something at one or two in the AM, maybe it's not best for a code enforcement officer to go out there at two or three in the AM. Maybe that's the sheriff that we contract with.
Well, I would expect, I would expect the code enforcement officer to use their very good judgment.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Some of that three AM stuff is shenanigans that you might wanna have.
Of course.
Can we back up just a little bit from the, from the minutia of the job description to the question of the kind of enforcement that SIO township wants to do?
Big picture?
Yeah, the big picture, because in the past, the township has been um, well, I know different people characterize it different ways, but obviously, but um it's been complaint-driven. And um, and so do we wanna, I think one question is, do we wanna move away from that and have somebody out there looking for violations? Okay, so that's one thing I think that we should be clear about. And if that's the case, then it's going to be people coming in, probably coming to our complaint department, proceeding. And 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 filing some kind of a written complaint. Um, so for the most part, it's not gonna be stuff at one in the morning because it'll come in afterwards and we'll be investigating maybe. But, you know, I think that timeframe is really, you're right, that's the sheriff's department.
No, but, but.
No, I was just saying, whatever the language is on the job description, just to make clear that we expect them to be available during a regular, you know, outside of regular business hours.
Well, so, so the other question is, I, I guess, what categories of violations is this person going to focus on? Some things, I think, still fall into the planning area. I mean, there's, there's zoning violations.
I, I would think zoning, I would think any sport, I, anything, get familiar with our code of ordinances, cause that's your bailiff.
So, so this person would be working together with
Of course.
with um someone from Carlisle.
Doug's gotta say they can't do this, they can't do this.
With the zoning official.
Right, 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 okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Or the building official or the.
Right. The fire marshal, I mean, the fire marshal.
I, 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 I think a code enforcement officer for whatever are the, whatever our ordinances, it could be the, it could be dogs, animal stuff. It could be dangerous building, it could be blight, it could be nuisance, it could be noise, it could be zoning, it could be not doing the PUVs or the special use can, I, I, the panoply.
It's an ordinance enforcement officer, yeah. All the ordinances.
And 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 I, and I know Fink and Fink has got experience doing all that. They do the criminal, they do the zoning, they do the ordinance.
Conrad is sort of the point.
I mean, it's beneath Mariah, but she's got Conrad.
But, but this.
Let's enable Joyce to go do her thing.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I agree.
Joyce, what do you want to?
Joyce, just tell us what you need.
You know, I, I wanted to uh just get a sense of whether we're looking at part-time, full-time, permanent versus temporary, and I think you've answered that question. And um, you know, I made a couple of adjustments in the job description based on our discussion, and I think we're good to go.
So we'll bring it back for the fifteenth, uh, meeting on the fifteenth.
Or you want something?
No, just to authorize me to go ahead and advertise.
All right, okay, so, so, okay.
What I'd like to do is, is offer that motion, if I could.
Well, let, just, let's be clear what Joyce wants from us, so we're clearly giving her what she needs in order to move forward. It sounds like what you'd like is authority to tweak, to tweak this and then move forward with the.
I've talked about this with Joyce, obviously, yeah. So
Well, great.
So um, so I'd, I'd like, and and the reason is, Will, is we have no money appropriated for this. We'd like to appropriate money for this to show that it's important. I'd like to put it in its own, you know, activity, code enforcement, so we can start tracking the revenue and the expenditures of it. Um, so it'd be to establish a permanent, I'd make the motion to establish a permanent part-time position of ordinance officer at a rate of twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents an hour and to appropriate up to fifteen thousand dollars for the remainder of FYE twenty-four general fund fund balance to one oh one, seven oh three code enforcement, which will be a new category in our budget.
So we have a motion by Flintoff?
Support by Riser.
Support by Riser. Is there further discussion? No, well, please call the roll.
Does that, does that work in, in understanding that the job description with minor edits is authorized? I would like to add that, okay.
There's anything, anything else that I covered?
I think it covers everything I need at this point, so we just need to get the right person.
Great.
Yeah.
All right, please call the roll.
Riser? Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
All right, motion adopted.
Now, we're back to Doug.
Yes, oh yeah, okay. Um, I did, uh, while you guys uh were, were talking about code enforcement. I was able to get Tom Covert on the phone and he uh thankfully answered at, you know, ten twenty-five at night. And while there were some dates uh that he was aware of that were being thrown around, uh, he um wa- was not aware that this was the date that he was supposed to be here, that it landed on, so he is not ready uh to discuss the Knights of Columbus. And I would like to be, we'd like to be moved to a future meeting.
Okay. I'd like to make a request to Doug and Joyce on the record. I know we've talked about this before, but I'm gonna make it very clear. I am requesting that our planner and our manager be responsible for preparing planning items and placing them on the board agendas to ensure that all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Can we also add that we have, so this is happening, some kind of written, like, we have written confirmation, they've been told, some kind of email communication, it's part of the board package or something. Because again, the, well, I called them or I left a voicemail or whatever. I mean, we just saw what happened here.
Right.
Just so, if it's an email, it could be an email, there's had to be some, you know, FedEx site thing.
So I'm contemplating that, do we just, do we need to move to table this uh to a date uncertain or postpone it to a date certain? Or do we just not, do we just not consider it?
I wanna ask Mariah for her opinion on what kind of motion, cause I think you're right.
I can table it, then we remove from the table.
I don't know.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it matters.
It doesn't matter.
Well, we, we don't have to table, we can just postpone it.
But you postpone to a date certain, you table C and A DM. So I don't know when the, when works for them.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Or do we, do we know, do we have, we don't know when they're ready. So I move to table this. And then we'll remove from the table and get it on an agenda when, when they know to be here.
I see. Okay, so move by Riser, support by Brizo, to table, there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes seven oh.
I believe that brings us to K two. And actually, K two through K five are the determinations from the uh Compensation Commission. And I know, Mariah, if you wanna address this in Jim's stead.
Sure. So um, I think most of you have done this before, but if, if you take no action, the resolutions um and and the change to the salary takes effect. If you, if someone wanted to um deny or vote to deny, that motion could be made. It takes five trustees to deny, so if only four voted to deny, the new salaries would still take effect. And all of them for the first of the fiscal year, April one? Correct, April one, twenty twenty-four. And I, I wanna thank the Compensation Commission. Um, they had a bunch of meetings. Um, I know that they considered a lot of data. They really stepped up their analysis um from the first, and I think the process is really developing and evolving, and just wanna appreciate them for their um service.
Yeah, so what, what do we?
I mean, you, you also can, you can vote to approve them, you just don't have to.
And it, and it, and it has absolutely no effect.
It has the same effect as no action.
Okay, then, why bother than this, I guess?
We, we, someone could make a motion to take no action on the determinations.
I think that's wrong not to publicly.
Yeah. It's a transparency issue too, to bring that, bring him here.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna suggest we should, we should, we should do, take a stand, we support it or we don't. I, I, I would move uh that we adopt the uh, I guess, I would move, I don't know, do we move to
You can ignore.
To formally adopt or
You can accept.
Except, except, to accept the uh
Determinations.
Determinations of the Compensation Committee on uh agenda items.
Take them.
Two, K three, K four and K five.
Could you please take them one by one, just for the record?
On, on.
Set of four agenda items at once.
Okay, on, I move, we accept the recommendations of the Compensation uh Committee for K two determination of salary for township trustee.
I second it. So move by Riser, support by Brizo. I don't know, does this have to be a roll call vote?
Well, it's involving money.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Resolution accepted.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Compensation Committee for uh agenda item K two, the determination of salary for the Township Treasurer.
K three, but that's okay.
Thank you.
I'd support.
So move by Riser, support by Brizo. Unless there's further discussion, uh, please call the roll.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No, it's too high.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Uh, motion to accept, pass six one.
I move that with respect to agenda item K four, we accept the recommendation of the Compensation Committee regarding the determination of the salary for the Township Clerk.
Support. Move by Riser, support by Brizo, again.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
No, it's too high.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
I move with respect to agenda item K five, that we accept the determination uh by the Compensation Committee. We accept the recommendation by the Compensation Committee, their determination of salary for the Township Supervisor.
Second. Move by Riser, support by Brizo, please call a roll.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brizo?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
I believe that brings us to the public comment number two. This is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Brizo, will you serve as our time keeper? We have one member of the public still present, Kathleen.
No, I don't wanna interfere with John, but it's just going on.
I was just gonna give you a shout out. You can be a pain in the butt sometimes, but you care a lot about SIO, and I appreciate you and your fellow Compensation Commission or committee members for all the work you did on that. I know you've worked harder than your comps and I appreciate the work.
All right, you two hug it out. Go ahead, just hug it out. Hug it out.
All right, uh, please. If anyone's participating remotely who would like to come.
Pam Boyd, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Pam Boyd, a SIO resident. Yes, I would like to thank Kathleen for all of the information she brought to the Compensation Commission. And I know that Jim Dries also brought some information as well. Regarding the ordinance officer, I hope that this board will take into consideration the hours where most complaints come into the township. In particular, the party barns on SIO Church have a long history of residents needing help um late on Friday night and Saturday night. And this is such a long-term problem that um, that it I, I hope that you have evening hours in part on the weekends uh to help these people get some peace. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Next up is Rob Pattson. Go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Brizo, for trying to answer twelve questions all at once. Uh, that wasn't meant individually towards you, that was towards the whole board, and thank you to Clerk Flintoff and Trustee Carrie also for answering those questions and uh uh for Manager Parker for answering a question later on in the meeting. Unfortunately. Unfortunately, we missed the whole point of the fire department discussion we had this weekend through emails, and it was three hours and fifteen minutes. If the, if the chief had been here, he would have been sitting for three hours and fifteen minutes before that item would have been covered. I would again urge this group to change the rules of order so that when staff, whether it's IT, utilities, parks, assessor, fire, is before this board, let them do their business before the board at the very beginning of the meeting so that they can go home. That's, that is a very reasonable request. We, the, the consultants who are here for four or five hours are getting paid for that time, our staff are not. Manager Parker, got a question for you. Is the search for the Finance Director, is that ongoing as well in parallel to the consultant?
We plan to advertise the Finance Director position. However, as it stands right now, there's a real shortage and the demand is high related to Finance Directors, so I think timing is really important and part of that process is getting our house in order so that when we do advertise, we may be able to attract really good qualified candidates. So it is something that we plan to do, but there's, there are some things that we need to do internally first.
Very much, and I believe you made that point early on when you talked about getting the consultant in. Can I urge this group to get some finance staff in to help our finance manager finally? And then we have a, we have two great reports in the packet tonight from the Parks Director. That was a very good report and a very detailed report from our IT manager. Not on the IT manager report, is making the Zoom computer in the room that you're in now, making that a hardwired connection, because as it is wireless now, it, the wireless connection gets overwhelmed when there's a lot of phones and a lot of computers connecting through it, and we get freezes in the Zoom feed. That didn't happen tonight, that hasn't happened in the last few meetings, but that happened often during a busy meeting.
And Rob, that, that is on his list. We've spent six hours together in this room over three meetings, going through everything, and it will take about four more hours, and it's, it's on his list. I, he is going through and identifying, there, there are more hardware and wiring issues than I certainly understood as a non-IT person about what's making this not work. So he's, he's going through it methodically, but our goal for this, because Christie and I, boom, have taken this as far as we can, pre-pandemic to now, but our goal is that we have a flexible space here. We certainly won't need to ask a hardworking staff person to stay late with us, and it'll be easier for committees when they, you know, come in and, and it'll be streaming without the use of Zoom as well. So we're, we're pushing forward improvements and it's, it's definitely on Chris's list. He's just also dealing with some of the critical server infrastructure neglect that he has to prioritize.
Just the idea that we have basically open access wireless and we're not on a virtual private network, it would be so easy with anybody with a little bit of skill to hack into every computer that's, that's sitting in this, in this room right now. It would not be that hard. If we were at a Black Hat Conference, we'd all be hacked, man.
Right.
So, those are the things, well, those things we're going to address over is.
Chris is on it.
Yeah, I'm working with Chris and Joyce, we've got a meeting set and we're going to engage Jessica as well to kind of help.
Yeah, so Rob, did you have further comments?
Just that it's a minor complaint compared to the massive problems that Chris is addressing, so we appreciate that. That's everything. Thank you for a long meeting, but a, a meeting where you treated one another with respect. That is a great improvement, so well done.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you, Rob.
Further comments?
Next up is Paula Globerson. Go ahead, Paula.
Yeah, well, thank you to Kathleen Brandt and all those on the Compensation Committee, because I watched all of them, and I appreciated what she brought to the table, she's a true fact finder. And the next thing I want to appreciate Clerk Flintoff and Mark Brzeo and anybody I may be forgetting who brought up with the Lithia project about making sure, since it's, is this PUD status, what's going to happen with those empty buildings, what's going to happen with the mixed juice situation? I think they need to be held into that contract and of course, the fire department, only five thousand dollars. But I think that needs to be looked at, even though it's a very impressive situation and it's not going to use more REUs on our sewer, because we've had problems in the past with them. PUD, trying to increase density and then taking residents off a sewer and utilities, because that's a big issue with all these projects. Anyway, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Paula. Next up is Pat Stein, go ahead, Pat.
Good evening. So I had no intention on making any public comments today, and I'm, I'm glad that I have the opportunity to make these comments so quick after the votes regarding the Compensation Committee's recommendations and Treasurer Palmer's choice to vote no on two of those recommendations. Treasurer Palmer, the fact that you are retiring or they're going to be gone shortly after the effective date of the new rate for the treasurer, that's sort of a nothing burger. But knowing that your deputy treasurer is making an obscene amount. I mean, off the charts. And for you to vote no on the clerk's, the recommendation for the clerk, that is sort of the cherry on top of the bitterness that you show a fellow member of this board ongoing. I'm, I'm so, I'm not surprised, but again, I'm very disappointed. Shame on you and good night all.
Thank you, Pat. Nice, you know where the hands are.
Just something in follow-up, this is what somebody said. Joyce, could you ask Doug Luad and his next Planning Commission, you know, Planning Report to talk about the vacant, the soon to be vacant, or it's not soon, but when those current buildings become vacant, what are the options for, what's the best way to develop those, to market those? How do we plan now for what we might want there, you know, two or three years down the road?
Okay.
All right, so, Trustee Brzeo, about to make a motion.
To dismiss.
To adjourn. Motion by Brzeo, support by Carey, all those in favor say aye.
Thanks, Chris.
You are dismissed.